Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of May 26, 2022, to order. Our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I invite all who can to stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could ask everyone to continue to stand, since we last met as a city council, 31 people have been murdered in our country by, in two different acts of violence, one in Buffalo, New York, one in Uvalde, Texas. In Uvalde, Texas, it was 19 children that lost their lives. Thirty-one families will never be the same. Let us take an extended moment of silence in memory of all of the lives lost. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Holstich?
Here.
Councilmember Corres is excused. Councilmember Woods?
Present.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Here.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye, present. And we have no presentations this evening. Acceptance of the agenda is the next item. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda and may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for the acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote? Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff would request that we remove from the agenda item 1G, which is a contract service agreement with Amadeus Airport IT Americas, to come back at a later date.
All right. And from council, are there any items that you would like removed? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item 1F, please.
1F. 1F is in Frank. Thank you. City Attorney, are there any other items? Excuse me. All right. City Attorney, please provide a report of closed session.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public, the city council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss those items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Our next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comments for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. City Clerk, do we have any registered speakers?
Russ Huthi, followed by Brad Anderson.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, city council, and city manager. For the record, I'm Russ Huthi, chairman of Sonora Sunrise Neighborhood. It's been my pleasure to appear before you tonight and to commend the engineering department staff who conducted studies for safety of numerous people walking, running, cyclists, and motorists along Mystique Avenue between Farrell and Sunrise. As I understand it, the engineering staff has recommended a three-way stop sign being inserted at Ceresos and Mystique Avenue and reducing the speed limit. In addition to the safety aspect, the residents of several HOAs, single-family homes, Mystique will be greatly benefited. This is a recommendation before you tonight, and I urge you, and I really do urge you, to approve this as this incident in waiting. I particularly want to thank a Sunrise board member, John, over there, who worked diligently with the engineering department this last year to get this approved so far. I really do hope that the city council does approve it tonight. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's been before you.
All right, ready? Hi, my name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Ranssmaras. I wanted to talk on two items tonight, or this evening. Item 1A, and that's concerning the remote meeting, or really the non-participation in-person meeting of the board members or appointees of the city council. I'm flatly opposed. Yes. Is this Mike here? Hi, Brad Anderson, City of Ranssmaras. I wanted to speak on two items tonight. Item 1A, and that's concerning, and I guess AB 361 that the city has implemented. I'm flatly against this, opposed to this, and I think the city should get back to work and get the, well, I'm kind of flustered here, I guess. The law is being immensely abused throughout the state of California, and it's fraud when you really think about it, if you're avoiding the public by not coming to these meetings in person because you had a closed session meeting earlier today remotely only, which is odd, and then you have city council meetings. So anyway, I'm opposed to that, and I'm going to speak on 3C, too. That's concerning just a rewrite of some of them, or amending a lot of the city municipal codes, concerning administrative citations and fines, and it's just a gross overreach from the city to impact, what's going to negatively impact anybody that the city cites. And this is, I can make examples, but to just read through it yourself, hopefully you will rewrite that or at least look at it more closely before you, you know, before you pull the trigger. Thank you very much.
Charlie Irvin?
Hello, everyone. My name is Charlie Irvin. I'm a member of the Desert Highland Gateway Community Action Association and the Desert Highland community, also a planning commissioner here with the city of Palm Springs. And today I wanted to talk about the 3C with the abatement. For me, as a resident, also a long community member, I think that this is something that's very dangerous that we are going down as a city. We've already had our community and our city deal with COVID-19. Now we have other issues that are being added to losing our homes possibly, as well as I've seen here on some of the items that are here. You guys will be removing the discussion from the attorney with the communities. That's something that I think is very dangerous. There's other items that are there. This happens to remind me of a lot of the things that we've seen here in our city, one being in the 1995s where the city pulled meters from a community in Desert Highland on the streets of Rosa Parks, also on Tranview, and also El Dorado. They were forced to move four units into one unit. I just think that this change and these sudden changes will affect our city and our residents, and I hope that you guys really consider to make an adjustment and do something more like being proactive with providing the community with different types of things, such as giving programs to help build, I mean, clean up your homes, as well as other things, to clean up yards before we start to take properties. Thank you.
Dieter Crawford?
Good evening, council staff. Want to speak on item 3C. My name is Dieter Crawford, vice president of Desert Highland Gateway Estates Community Action Association. Just want to echo what the last two gentlemen said about the abatement procedures. Just want to say, see us proceed with caution, removing the 15-day time period between issuance of a warning notice and the first administrative fine, and also removing the language that mandates the city manager to cooperate with neighborhood groups. Our neighborhood just fears that if community members don't clean up their properties, liens will be put on their homes, and the tax collector can sell the homes if they don't pay off the debt. We have a lot of elderly residents who are on fixed incomes. We're dealing with record-high inflation as well as rising cost of living. So we want to do everything we can to get in compliance before residents receive fines. We want to work with nonprofits such as Habitat for Humanity to hopefully bring residents up to code, maybe even do some community cleanup days or provide dumpsters to residents. We saw in the past where nuisance property fines have led to families losing their homes and lawsuits filed against municipalities. It recently happened in Indio and Coachella, who contracted with the law firm Silver and Wright to handle property abatement fines, and we don't want that to happen here in Palm Springs. Our community is against this ordinance in its current state, and we urge the council to consider adopting the ordinance, to not consider adopting the ordinance at this time. And also, just want to express our support for the speed cushions in Gateway Estates as well. Thanks for your time and consideration. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Ronald Hanson, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
My name is Ron Hanson. I live at the top of Racket Club at 2338 Tuscany Heights Drive, and I'm calling in on measure, or item 3D. The, I feel that the current chicanes are ugly and ineffective, and that they should be replaced with permanent structures. I believe installing calming or friction structures that can be landscaped as a median would work nicely and be effective in reducing the speed of traffic on Racket Club Drive. I hope my letter to you today summed up that. I had mentioned that roundabouts or traffic circles would be preferred, but I've revised my position and feel that simple installing calming friction structures would be fine. The current temporary chicanes degrade the whole neighborhood. They look ugly, and they're unsafe. And that's all I really had to say.
Thank you.
You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you for taking my call. I'm Mark McFarland. I live at 2480 North Palamo Drive and also own the property directly across the street at 2495. And then we about to Racket Club Road, which is in question. It's amazing how the police need money to hire new police. Just park yourself on Palamo, and you'll see the speeders live in one of our own streets in Little Tuscany, not to mention the travel, the trucks that at times forget how fast they are actually going. Finally, I'd like to say on the calming measures that are there now are a joke. I vote no to these, but say we need those roundabouts or the rubber calming units. I thank you very much, and thank you for taking my call.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, I speak to you as a resident at this point, not a member of City Council. And I'm here really to talk to you about the Racket Club traffic calming and my complete support for that. The process started in 2015, way back then, and it has never, they've only tried temporary at this point, and they have not worked whatsoever. Speed bumps don't actually work because of the grade of the hill, so we have to come up with alternatives that work, which leaves us with chicanes and our roundabouts, which are what's outlined in the staff report. I highly recommend that you go ahead and approve the roundabouts and that we really make those roundabouts accessible to bicyclist, motorist, and pedestrians. And the reason I say that, if you go up Racket Club, it is one of the most glorious views of the valley that the city has that's free to the public. And so we get a ton of walkers, a ton of bicyclist, and motorist on top of that, and the three of them are not doing well together, and people jump out of the way and off the curb. And they also want, the neighbors want and have pushed for all of this time, and they're a bit delusional, so I'm so happy that this is finally on the agenda, to get something that actually works and is aesthetically pleasing and highlights the entire surrounding of the Bahia and/or the alluvial fan that's so predominant throughout the city. It also leads to one of our premier new developments called Desert Palisades up there, and staff has already spent, I think in 2016, I could be wrong on that date, they spent like $23,000 actually designing the roundabouts. They were presented to the neighborhood. The neighborhood gracefully accepted those roundabouts, but they were put on hold for a variety of reasons from council. So now is the time to do it. We have the funding for it, and I highly suggest the roundabouts for Racket Club. And if you don't think that's possible, absolutely the chicanes, but those also need to be favorable for pedestrians and bicyclist as we go along the process. So thank you very much for your time.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our list, and for the record, we were unable to reach one speaker, Mr. Daniel Hall.
All right. Thank you. We will now move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without the following items which were removed: 1F for separate discussion and 1G removed completely. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second.
We've got a first and a second. We're doing our votes orally this evening, so.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0.
All right. So we will move on to item 1F, which was pulled by Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One, I'd just like to pull this item for a staff report. If staff could give a summary, please, because I know there's been a lot of community interest in this item. And then I just have one question. I do think that the city has some interest in screening the view of the wastewater treatment plant from the park and the pickleball courts there. And so I was just wondering if staff had a recommendation in their conversations with the community about what might work that wouldn't impact pickleball playing but could maybe be, you know, put on the side of the wastewater treatment plan, of the fence, or some other type of screening that wouldn't be a wall? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Joel Montalvo, City Engineer. The item before you, or the block wall was conceived a while ago while there was, the residents or the pickleball community had expressed interest in shielding the pickleball courts from the noise and possibly the odor of the treatment plant. And there was a decision made to move forward with constructing a block wall so that the block wall would, one, shield the pickleball players and actually provide some sort of protection from the odor, but it really, it was something that was decided, and staff moved forward with the design and bidding the project and awarding the project. Once we did put the project out to bid, the community, it was understood really from the greater community that they really did not want the wall to be constructed because it posed a danger, or someone playing pickleball could actually hit the wall and get hurt, and it really wasn't going to pose or block enough of the odor from, coming from the wastewater treatment plant. So I think based on all this information, the city took a step back. We polled the community, and 65% really of the pickleball community really was not in favor of the wall construction. So with that information, after the survey was done, the city decided to stop the project and terminate the contract with the contractor. So I can answer any questions. The first one question really was, can the city work to shield the pickle wall from, the wastewater treatment plant from the pickleball courts without building a wall? And we could explore options, screening, maybe putting hedges or something between the wastewater treatment plant and the actual fence. The one thing to note is right adjacent to that fence is a major storm rain line, so we, there wouldn't be any type of heavy construction that would be allowed. So we really have to keep that area clear. So that's something that we have to consider if we, as these conversations move forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm just wondering if City Council might consider also providing direction to have staff address some sort of screening so that we can block the view of the wastewater treatment plant from our beautiful park? Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This issue actually came up when I was campaigning, and it came forward through staff because it was just this constant question of why do we have to see it? It's ugly. It doesn't beautify our park. So I agree with Councilmember Holstich in that it would be nice to actually be able to follow through with that. I understand the block wall wasn't going to work. That's fine with me, but I think the original point was that it was unsightly, and I think that's true. So if there is an option, great. If there's not a feasible option, I don't think that we need to waste our time on it either. Go ahead.
Mayor, members of council, if I could just also add, we have received some feedback that they may not want the screening to block the sunlight, but we can certainly continue to have that dialogue with the committee about options, and screening has been an option.
So might it be appropriate to ask staff to work with the community and look into perhaps some landscaping options or something else that would provide some screening where it is feasible? Does that work for, okay, I see heads shaking?
Yes.
All right. Then can we get a motion to approve item 1G for the removal of the, and I'll make it, or 1F, excuse me? We will cancel the contract for the construction of the block wall and direct staff to work with the community to identify landscaping options to provide screening within the park from the wastewater treatment plant?
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries, 4-0.
We will now move on to public hearings. The first public hearing is item 2A, to consider the adoption of resolution regarding delinquent wastewater disposal charges. Staff report, please.
Madam Mayor and members of council, your first public hearing item this evening is relative to delinquent charges for waste collection. This is brought to you on part of staff and also Palm Springs Disposal Service, who services our residential and commercial waste disposal accounts. In terms of this process, this is an annual process that's established, and it's established pursuant to the Palm Springs Municipal Code as well as California state law. As of April 22 of this year, there were 743 delinquent accounts that were identified. Just to give you a point of comparison, last year we had over 1,000 delinquent accounts. So in this year's number of accounts, it's less than what we had last year. In terms of the notification process and the public hearing that is required, both under the Municipal Code and state law, we sent out public notices, as is our practice in both English and Spanish. In that notice, we identified that those who had delinquent accounts could make arrangements with Palm Springs Disposal Service to pay or make payments to avoid the lien process. I just want to put this out there publicly that anyone who received the notice and has a delinquent account still has until June 10 to make arrangements with Palm Springs Disposal Service. The phone number to contact is 760-327-1351. So again, there is still time for those who would wish to make payment and not be on the lien list. Also, just as a point of information, there are some customers who prefer to actually have their fees paid through the lien process. So we do have a number of regulars who are on that list every year. That concludes my presentation this evening. We do have the public hearing this evening for anyone who received the notice who wants to protest the lien. We also have representatives of Palm Springs Disposal Service if you have any questions about this process or the delinquent accounts. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Holstich, I can't see you. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Then we will, at this time, open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any public testimony?
No, ma'am.
There being no speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0.
All right. Next item is 2B, a public hearing to consider an appeal by George Youssef of the Palm Springs Car Wash concerning the Planning Commission's decision to deny a conditional use permit to alter hours for off-premises alcohol sales located at 300 North Indian Canyon Drive. I'd like to ask for staff report, please.
Madam Mayor and members of council, the next public hearing item that you have before you is a request for an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of an amendment to a conditional use permit. This in particular involves the Palm Springs Car Wash that's located at 300 North Indian Canyon. The applicant has a conditional use in place for the car wash, gas station, and convenience store to allow the sales of alcohol in the convenience store. When the conditional use permit for the alcohol sales was approved, it did include limitation on the hours of operation, limiting the alcohol sales to 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. The applicant filed a request to amend the conditional use permit to allow the sales of alcohol up until 2:00 a.m., which is consistent with state law and is allowable by the alcoholic beverage control through the state of California. One of the things to be aware of is that it's a little bit unique in terms of the conditional use permit to place limitations on the hours of the sales. We do have a number of places throughout the community that do have alcohol sales but don't have such limitations, other than the ABC restrictions that are already in place. Secondly, relative to the alcohol sales here at the service station and car wash, there are requirements in the code relative to security measures. Most importantly, it does require that they have video surveillance that's available for the police department to review. Should there be any issues, the applicant does have that in place. Also, the applicant has indicated that they do have a security patrol that they have hired. So I just wanted to point that out relative to this request and the proposed amendment. As I had indicated, the car wash is located at 300 North Indian Canyon, at the intersection of North Indian Canyon and East Amato Road. The actual convenience store where the alcohol sales occur is approximately 1,000 square feet. It sits to the east side of the site, is located approximately 75 feet back from Indian Canyon, and then the alcohol sales, as I had indicated, are just within that 1,000-square-foot space. The Planning Commission reviewed this amendment request over two meetings and had a number of concerns with it, and ultimately were not able to make the following two findings relative to a conditional use permit. Finding number two is relative to consistency with adjacent businesses. The extended hours, the planning- The extended hours, the planning commission felt, were inconsistent with adjacent businesses, also inconsistent with some of our other alcohol sale uses, which close earlier than that, some as early as 10:00 PM, some at midnight. We have only a small handful that actually go until 2:00 AM. So there was a concern about consistency. And then their second concern was relative to finding number three in the criteria, that because of the distance of the store from the street and the lighting on the site, they were concerned that there would be safety issues, also concerned that the alcohol sales would be occurring through a pass-through window after midnight. And so for those two reasons, they weren't able to make the findings, and they rejected the amendment to the conditional use permit relative to the extension of hours. Your options this evening, as with any appeal that comes before the city council, is you can support the findings of the planning commission relative to their concerns about consistency with other businesses and safety issues, or else you may make findings that the extension of the hours will not pose safety issues, and that the security measures that the applicant has taken are adequate to guarantee public safety, health, and welfare. So those are the options that you have before you this evening. That concludes staff's presentation to you. Mr. Yusef, the applicant is here and will be making comments to you under the public hearing portion of the agenda.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Councilmember Woods.
For other liquor establishments, other liquor stores that are in the city, does the city say that there are hours of operations for them?
We don't have all of them on file, but one of the things the planning commission did request as part of this hearing is for us to do a survey and identify the hours. We have done that, and we do have most of them on file. And so as I had indicated earlier, in terms of the hours of operation, we only have a small number that operate up until 2:00 AM, that do liquor sales until 2:00 AM.
And then after 2:00 AM, state law, you can't sell?
Correct. Between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
Okay. So, so, okay. But most of them close earlier?
We do have a number that close at 10:00 PM. This is Palm Springs after all. And then we also have a handful that close at 11:00 or 12:00 midnight.
And has the applicant, in any way besides wanting to sell alcohol, indicated he would do any facade improvements or improvements to the building or visual improvements to the outside of it?
I don't believe that that was discussed at the planning commission hearings, but that might be a question for the applicant to respond to this evening.
And the amount, the, are, were they looking to serve alcohol through a drive-up window? Is that?
No, it would be a walk-up window, as I understand it.
So it's a window, though? That they, they don't walk into the store, they walk up to a window?
No. The store would be closed between midnight and 2:00 AM. They would come to the window and be able to purchase alcohol, as well as any other convenience items that are available in the store, from a window.
Great, thank you.
Others with questions? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. So initially, staff recommended the finding that the use was necessary and desirable and was in harmony with elements and objectives of the general plan. Is that right?
That is correct. Staff had recommended approval of this amendment to the conditional use permit, correct?
Thank you. And this is located in the retail entertainment office land use category in section 14. So can you define what is the, you know, use for that category?
Certainly. Under the retail entertainment office category of the section 14 specific plan, as the name implies, it does allow for a variety of commercial uses. Retail is one of those, which is a component that we would typically see on Indian Canyon. It does also allow for entertainment uses, as we look at the expansion of the tribe's facilities. Those could also extend out to Indian Canyon. And then the final component of that is office uses. And so it does allow a mixture of those uses. What is perhaps unique is that this car wash business has been established for quite some time, and was in place before the amendment, the 2014 amendment, to the section 14 specific plan. And so while it might not be absolutely consistent in terms of entertainment or things like that, that is talked about in the section 14 specific plan, it is an existing use, it is a retail use, and so we have found that to be consistent.
Thank you. I think you just said what I was going to ask. So staff had initially found that the use, even the requested use, was consistent with the general plan?
Yes, that's correct.
And did staff make any findings or recommended findings, sorry, recommended findings that the use would be detrimental to existing uses or futures?
While we do evaluate alcohol sales seriously as part of the planning staff, we did look at the security measures that are in place. Number one, they do have their video camera system in place. Number two, their commitment for having a security patrol available. And based on those factors, we found that the public health and welfare could be supported in terms of our recommendations. And so it was based on those measures that we had recommended approval of it.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions now. Well, I'm sorry, I do have one more. I apologize. So this is on tribal, this is allotted trust land and owned by a tribal member. Could you just explain if that changes the consideration for council at all?
No, it does not. On allotted trust land, it is subject to the agreement that we have in place with the tribe relative to zoning procedures and is subject to the city's zoning processes. The one distinction that we might find here is that appeals can be brought forward to the tribal council.
Thank you. And then I'll, I'll ask this now, and if you don't have the answer, we could discuss it maybe after the public hearing. So I know you cited a few examples of stores that are open till 2:00 AM that do sell alcohol, like Bevmo, I think I saw in the documents here. So are there others in this, you know, same zoning category, retail entertainment office land use category, that also sell alcohol and also do it till 2:00 AM?
In terms of retail outlets in the REO category, I can't think of any. The others that sell until 2:00 AM are located outside of section 14 and not specifically adjacent to this. In terms of alcohol sales at the casino, I guess that's the nearest location. I'm assuming, I, I quite honestly don't know. I'm assuming that they sell alcohol all night. I don't know exactly what the, the tribe's limitations are in terms of alcohol sales. But that would be the closest one that I can think of. Other than that, retail outlets, no, we don't have any others in section 14 right there.
Thank you. And then one final question. I know that the state has considered, and Senator Scott Wiener has introduced bills allowing alcohol sales at bars, I think, and restaurants till 4:00 AM, and before the city council had supported that bill, and it's being reintroduced. So perhaps a question to the city attorney, or if we could discuss that later, if that would impact this, this hearing at all?
As I understand that bill, that has to do more with on-premises consumption, bars and clubs, as opposed to off-premises sales, which is what this is concerning. So I don't know if it's terribly relevant, although it's certainly something the council can take up and, and discuss at some point.
Thank you. No, I have no further questions.
All right. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The other establishments that are open until 2:00 AM, those are delivery, though, is that correct?
No.
No.
We have a couple of the 7-Eleven stores that sell alcohol until 2:00 AM. Bevmo is, also has hours until 2:00 AM and does delivery. They're not open to the public between the hours of, I believe, 11:00 and 2:00 AM. It's just, they do delivery until 2:00 AM.
Okay. But the 7-Eleven?
Yes, those.
Both of them?
Both of the locations that I'm aware of. The one on North Palm Canyon and the one at Vista Chino, both have sales until 2:00 AM, I believe.
And, but what about the one on Racket Club?
I, I don't have that information of the one on Racket Club, unfortunately.
You have a lot of 7-Elevens. Thank you.
Flynn, a couple of questions, most of mine have already been asked, but remind me, if I'm correct, up until midnight, customers can walk into the store and purchase alcohol or any other product, pay for it at the register, and then leave. And then at midnight, do they stop allowing anyone to enter the store?
That is what I believe to be correct, and I'll ask Mr. Yusef to just confirm that as part of his testimony. But it was my understanding that between midnight and 2:00 AM, all customers would come to the window, regardless of what you're purchasing.
And with regard to the closing hours for all of the other retail outlets that are selling alcohol, has the city imposed a earlier-than-2:00 AM requirement on any other location?
There's only a small handful of conditional use permits that have earlier closing times. Most of the alcohol sales do not have that limitation.
And those that do have the limitation, is that similar reasoning that was used here, or what, or do you recall?
I, I don't recall all of them, to be quite honest, but I would assume that there were reasons of safety or security for the limitation on the hours or impacts to adjacent uses.
This is not the only facility that is not allowed to stay open to 2:00 AM and do sales, is that correct?
That is correct. There, again, are others that do have some limitations on hours.
And you identified the two options that we have before us. Do we have a third option of wanting to, of identifying that the city should have a policy regarding, that is consistent across all similarly situated retail outlets as to what time they should close?
I think rather than considering that as an option, that would be direction to staff for further policy development.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Councilmember Woods.
Do the casinos, can they, they're a sovereign nation, are they under ABC? Do you know if they have to follow laws like that or not? I was trying to look it up here.
I, I might defer to the city attorney if he has.
He knows, right.
I, I don't know, to be quite honest.
I believe they do.
Okay. And then can I ask the police chief, his thoughts on this? It's very different in that it's a walk-up versus a walk-in. And I read some of the stuff about the lighting and whatnot is a little inadequate, according to the planning commission, and I'd just love to hear your feedback.
It's not working, but I'll speak loudly. Now it's on, thank you. I think the primary issue for having a walk-up is safety for the clerk inside, obviously. It offers a layer of protection for the clerk from people that might, at that time of night, be there for other purposes. And that can be an area where we have people sleeping at night, and so we would want to be careful that the environment is correct to make, you know, when they're distributing alcohol at that time of night. And if the staff believes that that has taken place, then I would be comfortable with that.
Great, thank you.
If there are no other questions for staff, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to provide their testimony. And the public is invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. If there are other speakers, the applicant will be invited to provide a rebuttal of up to two minutes. Is the applicant here and prepared to give testimony?
My name is George Yusef. I've been a resident in Palm Springs for 31 years, on my own business and interest in another business. I'm not a very good speaker, but I'm going to try. The reason I'm here is I'm asking for fairness, fairness from the city. I'm not sure why my business got the, until midnight, not till 2:00, just like a lot of them. I don't understand that part, but I would love to understand it. And the reason I'm asking to is higher cost for staffing. As everybody knows now, higher cost is staffing and rent. I pay rent to tribal member, and the rent gone up a little bit over what we expect. The lighting, the lighting's been improved big time. I'm not sure of any of the member from the planning commission visited my site, which is, if they go at night, they'll see it lit up very nice. The, working through the window, we can work with the city. We can hire an extra person and try to, extra staff member and try to open up till 2:00 o'clock. That's not a, a big issue. We can work, we have a very good record working with the city staff. I have improved the business in the past three years. I'm not sure if you guys recognize it from what it used to be and what it is now. The safety from the police department, they can tell you that declared us to open till 2:00 in the morning. The security company comes around when we need them, and they come around more often than, and our city cops, they're always in my sight at the station. I'm ready to answer any questions of you guys.
Mr. Yusef, could you explain your reasoning for closing access to your store at midnight, but wanting to leave it open until 2:00 AM using the pass-through?
For safety for the clerk. But lately, what we've been getting, the reason I applied for it is higher cost. And a lot of the employees that work in the downtown area, which is, has been improved a lot, and we have a lot of restaurants that stay till midnight, they like to take some stuff when they're going home. They like to take some beers, whatever the, the desire to take home. We do allow people to, we have a buzzer, we installed a buzzer now that we can buzz people in, but if needed to be in, we let them in.
So if you recognize the customer, you're allowing them access to your building?
Correct.
And if you don't recognize, you're, you're not allowing access?
We have a lot of locals, a lot of locals love our place and the safety that we have put in, and we put in bulletproof window, which is, we didn't have to, but we put it in for the safety of the cashier, the clerk.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Yusef? Councilmember Woods.
I apologize. You've owned the business for 20 years?
The business, I own the downtown shelves since 2007. I own North Palm Canyon Fuel, I'm a part owner, the one by the tramway, historic landmark, historic site. We improved that business too. Yes, since, and the car wash, I owned it for three years.
So the car wash is a separate from the gas station, then?
Well, we combine them now.
You combine them now? Okay, so you own both of them?
Correct.
Is what you're doing? Okay. And you, what, you know, the car wash, then, is it standalone, or, or do you need to make money off of alcohol to have the car wash run?
The higher cost of the rent, we need to figure out different ways to expand the revenue and increase the revenue. And yes, we do need the liquor sales to, we demand on it a lot now, believe it or not.
Okay. Well, thank you for the gas station further north, the historic gas station, if I'm correct. Lot of us use that gas station. Your prices are very competitive in town, so that's a good thing. In your 20, you, you've only owned the car wash for three years, you said?
Correct.
Three years. And do you have, or would you be opposed to any improvements in lighting and facade and any of that type of stuff?
Not at all. Any recommendation? We work with the city.
Okay. And I, I have a concern, I guess I just want to express to you, and I want you to, to mention to me. Coming up to a window, pressing a buzzer, it seems a little bit like I'm incarcerated than it does going into, you know, and what we're trying to do in Palm Springs, at least the efforts that I'm, with like cannabis and everything, is to normalize them and make them open and make them friendly, and all of a sudden, we're closing it all down. And it just seems to not have that same energy of welcomeness that I think we're trying so hard to get here. So can you talk a little about why?
We would love to, but lately, we've been getting some out-of-towners that they're not very friendly. So we've tried to, the locals, they get in, no problem. And like I said, we're going to try to hire an extra staff member to... I said, we're going to try to hire an extra staff member to be able to not leave one cashier. Through COVID, it was kind of a little bit hard for all the businesses to even find employees, so we're trying. If we find, we actually, so far, we're getting lucky to have an extra member now, and we can open.
So it sounds to me, in listening to you, that you have problems already up to midnight?
We don't have problems, problems that we cannot handle. We don't, we take care of, like I said, there's not actual problems that scary, but we're trying not, we're trying to prevent it from happening. Until now, I haven't had any problem, and like I said, I got cleared by the Palm Springs Police, and they can tell you. My bathrooms are open, we didn't shut them down. We try to help the community as much as we can.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Youssef? All right. Mr. Youssef, thank you, and if we have other comments from other people, you'll be given two minutes of rebuttal.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we're connecting now. Kathy Wormick, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Wormick, and I live at 699 Wilson Lane, and I am speaking today as the Chair of the Planning Commission to explain the factors that are just for you. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. When the Planning Commission looked at this, we were basically starting off looking for a city policy on when liquor stores should close, and we asked staff to go back and bring us the closing hours for all of the liquor stores in Palm Springs. What we saw is that the great majority of them closed at midnight, and there were three that had an exception till 1:00 in the morning. One of them was Bevmo, which had come to before us very recently, and they closed their liquor, in-store liquor sales at 11:00, but they were doing a delivery, home delivery till 2:00 in the morning, and I think it was approved because it was, by the commission, because it was till 2:00, and it was home delivery. The other two were the applicants, gas station and convenience store and 7-Eleven. So what we didn't find is we didn't find a concise city policy, which is what we would like to have had, and therefore, the commission took this under consideration, and the reasons for the denial had to do with the fact that the sales would not be inside of the, one, not inside of the convenience store, two, that they were through a window, and people didn't feel like the lighting and the security in the area, and the area itself was appropriate for liquor sales through a window. The commission discounted the 7-Eleven and the applicant's own gas station and convenience store because they were far distant from the center of the city and felt that the precedent of the other stores which close at midnight was the most appropriate. What we really would be looking for you, frame for you, is a clear policy and guidance on this. It isn't something where we should be all over the place, so I just wanted to thank you for my being able to speak to you tonight and wish you best of luck in your deliberations.
That concludes our list.
All right. Mr. Youssef, you're entitled to two minutes of rebuttal.
I'm not sure if making an example of my business for the whole city is a good idea that she was mentioned, but I have improved my lights, and I have did send in the city planning pictures. I'm not sure if they have it or not, but I did send an email with the lights, how it is at night, and I hope that the Planning Commission, they actually take a visit to my site and see how it is. The site is very well-improved, and there is more for improvement. I'm not saying no, but we can work together. We can, like I said, we can hire an extra person. That's not an issue. We were working on it already, and we can stay open till 2:00, the door open. We don't have to sell through the window. That's, we can take care of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There being no other speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a discussion or additional questions from council? I can offer a couple of comments to start. I think that the Planning Commission, in wanting to have a policy that would treat all retail establishments consistently that are similarly situated, is something that we should very seriously look at. I don't know what that policy necessarily should be. I'm not sure if closing, having a universal closing at some hour prior to 2:00 a.m. is necessary or appropriate or not, but I do think all retail outlets should have the same treatment unless there is a specific finding that a location has proven to be problematic or is likely to be problematic that would warrant that that location have a earlier closing. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll tell you, when I first read this, I thought, no, why would, why would we keep it open until 2:00? But I, that's the beauty of a public hearing, is that we get to hear from everyone on this and really think it through in real time. I think it makes sense to allow him, you know, to be open until 2:00 a.m. because we do have other places that are open late. The improvement of the lighting and the willingness of the applicant to work with staff on other improvements as necessary, I think, is fine with me. I appreciate that you're willing to open up your store instead of using the window. I think the walk-up window is, I think that's what gives people a little bit of the pause and not wanting to approve it. I do appreciate the difficulty with staffing. I understand that and the safety concerns. I'd like to hear from my other council members on whether or not the window is a problem or not for you all, but I am inclined to approve, allow for this use until 2:00 a.m.
The walk-up window did give me some pause as well. I think the explanation of one retail clerk working alone is certainly something that we need to take seriously. We do not want a loss of life for a robbery where someone is working in alone. I'm open to that. Frankly, one of the questions that arises in my mind when we think from a policy standpoint is, should there be a requirement that after hour X, if you're going to continue to sell alcohol or any other product, that you need to have at least two individuals present within the store from a security standpoint? From that, I would be looking at some advice from the police department as to what is the advantages from a security standpoint of having a second person on site. Any other comments from council? Chief, do you want to weigh in on the importance of a second individual?
Yeah, sure, Mayor. There was a study done in Gainesville, Florida, where they were having a series of robberies at convenience stores, mostly liquor stores, and one of the things they noticed is that by parking their vehicles in front of the liquor store, the employees' cars, as well as having two clerks, that they were able to substantially reduce the number of robberies in that city. So as a policy, it would be great for liquor stores, especially once they're fairly isolated, to have two clerks working during those prime hours.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. I support the appeal of the decision of the Planning Commission, and I do think that the CUP should be granted. Just looking and bringing us to the findings that the Planning Commission made, and then that we are supposed to make in terms of those findings that are in the staff report, but looking at the use, if it's necessary or desirable for the development of the community, is in harmony with the various elements or objectives of the general plan. Staff opined that it is, in their opinion, and that that was their initial recommendation, and that it's not detrimental, and then the site is adequate. And I appreciate the Planning Commission Chair calling in. I'm not sure if that was in her official capacity or personal capacity, but it's helpful to know that the Planning Commission was looking for a policy, because really, that is the role of the Planning Commission, is to apply the public policy that the City Council has decided or made in the interest of the public as elected representatives, and then apply that as a, and to make findings of fact. And so it does seem to me in the minutes that the Planning Commission was doing their best, trying to find, you know, what that policy may be, but I think in doing so, sort of overstepped the bounds of what the Planning Commission is, you know, supposed to look at under those findings, because some seem like personal opinion. But I appreciate the work of the Planning Commission in looking for those factors of what we might consider for a policy, and I think that is a great recommendation to create a policy if we need to, if staff thinks it's important for other permits or CUPs that we might have coming forward. You know, I appreciate the Palm Springs Police Department and the Chief's expertise on what, you know, would be inadequate safety measures to address the issues that Planning Commissioners and council members raised, as well as planning staff who does this every day. And I appreciate the fairness that the applicant has said, that, you know, I personally would rather spend my dollars in a local business in Palm Springs than a large corporate chain, and if the large corporate chains are able to operate and sell alcohol till 2:00 a.m., it's only fair that our small businesses are able to as well. We kept hearing that from businesses time and time again in the pandemic, the way that the state rules really often benefited big, big business instead of in-harm local business. So for all these reasons, but really fundamentally, because I think the findings were met, and they were met initially by staff's recommendations, I think that the appeal should be, did not, let me see, the appeal should be granted, and that the CUP should be granted as well.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. We will get to this. And is there a further discussion?
I didn't second it.
I didn't think you were.
Okay.
Is there further discussion?
Thank you. I think the applicant, thank you for coming, thank you for speaking. I very much appreciate that. I think the applicant is willing to work on the lighting plan, and I would say we'd want to work on that lighting plan to the satisfaction of the police department, as well as our planning department, or even a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, or ARC, it doesn't matter, as well as some other improvements to the site. You know, it's a little disconnect from the wonderful awning at the gas station next door, which is very mid-century. So lighting and other improvements, I think closing the window and having the store actually open with two people, I think his willingness to do all that overcomes most of the concerns that the Planning Commission expressed. So if we add those conditions in, which the applicant has agreed to publicly, I'd be happy to support the motion to allow it to occur.
I'm not sure if I heard the applicant say that he was agreeable to having two people in sight. I thought I heard him say that he wanted to get to there. Could you clarify, Mr. Youssef?
Yes, I am agreeing to having two people in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Protem?
I don't want to put unnecessary burden on Mr. Youssef's ability to open until 2:00 a.m. now. I'm more interested in offering the facade improvements as suggestions to do that, and I'm also fine if temporarily, while he's hiring an additional staff member to allow the business to run until 2:00 a.m. I did hear Mr. Youssef say that it's been tough to hire staff, and I, in light of seeing how difficult that is for many businesses and small businesses, I don't want him to wait too long.
Councilmember Woods, are you willing to accept it as recommended, or do you want required?
No, I want, I'm sorry. It, you know, the entrance to this is small. It's set way back from the street. I think we've heard both from the applicant and the police chief, there could be some activity that's occurring back there that we don't want. I think it's best to get it up front. It shouldn't be that hard to do, to get it going, and, you know, opening it till 2:00 a.m., I, you know, I don't, you know, having two people, I don't think it should be a problem. So I don't see a reason to defer it. I really don't want it, I personally do not think, selling liquor at 1:30 a.m. in the morning through a window is our values. We're really about openness and transparency, and it just, it just doesn't seem to induce that kind of thing. So the lighting, which he's, and the applicant's agree to all of it, so.
So, Madam Mayor, if I can, there's a motion on the floor. I'd love to see if there's a second and call for the vote. I'm happy to discuss those in more of a discussion, but I don't accept Councilmember Woods as friendly amendments to my motion. So unless, Mayor, you'd like to craft a motion that you think would, you know, get us there, or another council member, but just wanted to note that I think I disagree with those requirements and just having them be recommendations, hearing the, you know, competition issues that are going on now.
So let me offer some, a couple of comments. I would like to have us move to directing staff to develop a policy, recommendations that would come back to us at a later date regarding the hours that retail establishments should be able to be open to sell liquor. I'm very intrigued by the comments of the police chief that having two individuals on site is something that enhances security, but I don't want to just jump off immediately and start making an imposition of that as a rule without going through appropriate study. It sounds at face value absolutely appropriate, but we've made mistakes before where we thought things sounded really good, and then when we studied them, we find out that there's a layer that we were missing, so I'd like to go through that due process this time. So my inclination is to grant the, or to approve the CUP and to grant the appeal with a recommendation that the store owner add the second staff person, but not a requirement.
Certainly. So, you know, so I can agree with that. I mean, that can be up to them, but the open window and the lighting, which we've heard?
I think my take, and just my take, is the window and allowing accessibility to people that they know is a safety measure, and I'm just not inclined to try to second-guess what what's appropriate safety for a store owner operating in this climate that we have today. I agree with you completely. I'd rather have very open and accessible places, but if there's an incident tomorrow morning, or sometime down the road, where we required somebody to keep something open that they weren't comfortable with, and there was only one person, none of us would feel good.
And I just, I want to say that if that's going to be the motion, I can't support it, because my point would be, then don't have it open until 2:00 in the morning, you know, close it at 12:00. If there's going to be problems after midnight that we can't solve, if there were two people, or lighting, or closing the window, why do you keep, why keep it open till 2:00? When there's no real, there's no need for it. You know, if there was a need, I could totally understand, but we have, you know, you can get, and I think it's different to deliver liquor to a residence or to a hotel room than it is to actually go out, drive, no one's going to walk, you're going to drive to this location and then drive back. So, I won't be able to support it.
Mayor Protem.
I'd like to second the motion that's on the floor, but I do want to point out that part of the reason that Mr. Youssef is here is because he said that he needed, there was increase in cost, and that's why he's staying open until 2:00 a.m. Prior to that, there wasn't that same need. So, that, to me, that that is the compelling need for why it needs to stay open regardless of whether or not it's walk-up or fully open. So, I'd like to second that motion, that's on the floor already.
Is there any further discussion? Then we will have a vote on the original motion, as seconded by the Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods? Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-1.
Madam Mayor, I might recommend, because there were a number of motions, it might be appropriate for either the mayor or the city clerk, just to clarify for the record what the, what the original motion was that was just voted on.
Sure. Would City Clerk like to...
I have Councilmember Holstich's motion to grant the appeal and the CUP, and make a recommendation to staff, and I'm sorry, I got lost in my notes, I apologize. There was a recommendation to staff to work with the applicant on facade improvements, as well as a recommendation to look into developing future policies.
The recommendations relative to the facade improvements were recommended by Councilmember Woods. I don't believe Councilmember Holstich included those in the original motion, and so, as it stood, the original motion was for approval of the amendment to the conditional use permit, and approving the appeal, and it is without any additional conditions. Mayor Middleton later suggested the policy, but that was not part of the original motion.
Thank you. Is that consistent with what the majority of council intended? I'm happy to, I think that we had had a discussion about making the facade and lighting and others that we listed, recommendations instead of requirements, and at least in my mind, that was intended in the approval. Is that right for Mayor Protem and Mayor?
That's correct for me, but it wasn't that the, that Mr. Youssef needed to work with staff on those items, just that they were recommended for him to, to consider on his own.
My question would be, what do we need to do to direct staff, if there is a majority that would like to direct staff, to study and come back with recommendations to us regarding a closing policy that would be consistent for all retail establishments?
Can I get staff, I didn't, I don't know if I have enough information to include that, happy to discuss it. Does staff have an opinion on that, on if it's needed, how many of these are coming forward, you know, the work that it would take to create a policy versus the need, and all those considerations? I do just want to flag that there are, so this is just for retail, but the state might be changing how late they allow some alcohol sellers, bars and restaurants to stay open, and so it might change after that, depending on how broad of categories you want to assess. So, if I could ask Councilmember Garner, do you have an interest in that? And then, if you do, then we can ask staff for that response.
Normally, I would say sure, but in light of our strategic planning and wanting to cut down on the amount of work that we're doing at once, I would say I'd love to add it to our long list of things to consider in the future, but not necessarily do right now.
That was my sense, too, and why I wouldn't have, you know, included it in the motion that I made, so, but I'm happy to add it to the list as well for future review.
City manager, anyone else want to jump in on this?
My first suggestion would be, since the appeal was fairly narrow in scope, that this might be an appropriate subject for future meetings. In terms of workload, it's, really depends on the level of engagement. If we were going to consult community members and do the kinds of things we usually like to do when we're considering a holistic policy, that would be something where we would probably look to defer something else within our work plan. So, we are coming up on a round of work planning soon, so that could be an opportune time to add something like this to the list and look at it in the context of our overall goals.
So, why don't we leave this, then, for staff to assess and come back to us as you see appropriate, when you see appropriate? Thank you. We will now move on. And the next item is Item 3A. At this time, I would like to invite Mayor Protem Garner to introduce her intern, who will be presenting the following Item 3A, a discussion to approve a city-sponsored lunchtime program for youth and young adults.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my, this is Johnny Arrendondo, who has been working with me, and he's going to introduce himself a little, in a little bit. But Johnny and I have been talking about how we further engage youth and young adults in, to our city business, and how do we get them to want to come and work for the city of Palm Springs. So, he is going to present something that he's been working on, and what I want to make very clear to everyone is that Johnny drafted this staff report, and I think I changed two things, two minor things. And so, I've just really been impressed with his work ethic and his ability to take our larger conversations and condense them into this report and this, this presentation that he's going to give. And I know that we don't normally need to bring something like this before council, but I thought it was a great opportunity to allow Johnny to have a moment to present to council, which is not an opportunity that most college students have, and so that the public can also hear about this opportunity, to spread the word about city jobs. So, take it away.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and staff. My name is Johnny Arrendondo, and I am a senior at California State University, San Bernardino Palm Desert Campus. Today, I will be presenting the Lunchtime Program for Youth and Young Adults that aims to promote the opportunities that are available here in the city of Palm Springs. So, let's talk about our demographic. At the moment, there are about 5,073 students across Palm Springs, seven local schools, and a further 13,400 students at College of the Desert and California State University, San Bernardino Palm Desert Campus. After speaking to a few graduating students, we know that they want to develop transferable skills, and they also want to gain experience to put on their resume so that they can be competitive in today's workforce. So, how can they do that now? Well, they can volunteer at one of the many nonprofit organizations that are here in the city of Palm Springs, but overall, options are limited when it comes to getting an internship or a shadowing session. Furthermore, the city lacks an established channel to communicate with these new graduates, so often, they are unaware of the opportunities that are being offered. For example, when I applied to be an intern for Mayor Protem, it was because it was my own task to look into my career center and look at their new postings, and if students are not diligent in looking into those postings, they'll miss an opportunity like this one. So, how can we fix this? Well, we can implement the Lunchtime Talk Program. It will be a first and foremost attempt to support our residents of Palm Springs, but it will consist of six sessions, and it will have informational sessions that will be led by the city's departments. They will include an overview of each participating department, the opportunities that may be available, and how to become a qualified position, how to become a qualified candidate for those positions. This has the added benefit of career exploration for students that are graduating from high school and are making their way to college, because now they'll know what to study so that they can be qualified for those positions later on. And it's also a great opportunity for the departments to promote the benefits that they offer to potential employees or interns, and how many doors can be opened just by applying and potentially becoming an intern here. So, overall, and most importantly, I really want to stress this, this would be the place to promote internship and shadowing opportunities, because there is no space for miscommunication. They're directly engaged with the audience that will be applying for those positions. So, these meetings, in order to be successful, need to be promoted, and we have received confirmation from career counselor Oscar Fonseca, who works at the California State University, San Bernardino Palm Desert Campus Career Center, that we will be able to send out mass emails to current and graduating students so that they can be, they can be made aware of these opportunities. So, if they're on their way out, they can apply for something and stay here local. We don't want to be a city that gives into brain drain, and we can keep our local talent, and it would be a great opportunity for us to do so. And as an employee of the PAWS Radio and Media Lab, I can see to it that PSAs are recorded and broadcast on our radio station, so that as students tune in to listen to their favorite song during the break, they can hear our promotions and know about the opportunities that we are offering. At the moment, these meetings are scheduled to take place in Palm Springs High School in fall 2022. They were initially scheduled for summer 2022, but now that we have more time, we are guaranteed an audience, and we no longer have to rely on the willingness of the individual to go to these meetings over summer. And if possible, ideally, these meetings will be recorded and published online, so that individuals who may not fall into the youth and young adult demographic can still look into them, and it'll also be for the occasional student that doesn't show up to school that day. Our greatest challenge right now is determining which city departments will participate. However, because we have until fall now, we have the opportunity to get as many confirmations as possible before then. Lastly, the initial cost estimate, will we compose entirely of catering options that will not exceed $5,000? Sufficient funding is available in the current year fiscal, in the current fiscal year city manager budget, and below, I have attached a table with local catering options that will be provided at these meetings. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Johnny, thank you. Are there questions for Johnny?
Welcome aboard, Johnny. Thank you for your work. It's great to see that. Just, you gave some statistics which were valley-wide, and this is actually being targeted for Palm Springs residents?
That's right.
So, okay, so this is, you know, even though we're doing advertising, PSAs, I think I saw on page three, is wide, it's really for our residents to go to this program.
Really for our residents, but I don't think it would be appropriate to exclude every other youth and young adult in the valley, but primarily, yes, it will be for our residents.
Well, there would be a reason for that, and I think there are some laws about that, so we just, you know, I just wanted to see what, if that's the way we're going, great, if it's for our residents. Thank you.
Just to add on to that, Councilmember Woods, so the idea would be to make sure that we're, we're doing it in person here in Palm Springs locally for the Palm Springs High School students, but then also making sure that it's broadcast and connected to our university, since Cal State San Bernardino Palm Desert Campus is our only four-year institution in the valley. So, that's why it would have a larger reach valley-wide in that sense, but that's due to just where the campus is.
My understanding is that at our high school, we have students who are Palm Springs residents and students who are not Palm Springs residents. I don't think it would be a good signal for us to take and say we are setting up a program that's only going to be available for access by those who live within our city, most particularly when we have students who are here at our school. But I know what we're trying to do is to target our, our residents as much as we can possibly do so. I think this is an outstanding program, and I'm very anxious to move it forward. What I'm not anxious to do is make a decision between which one of our very nice restaurants that we would choose. I want somebody else to be making that decision, not me. Are there any other comments? So, is there a motion?
If I can just do, I will motion to approve this item, but I do want to just make one additional comment. You know, part of the reason that this came forward is because we have been hiring a lot of staff lately, obviously, in the city of Palm Springs, and the, what we've seen is that some of our staff members left because they got jobs closer to where they live, and we've also been hiring a lot of people from outside of the city, and while we love having the perspective of new people, there also can be a challenge when somebody finds a place that's closer to their, their home, and they don't have to commute anymore. So, this is just an opportunity also to enhance our economic development within the city of Palm Springs and the larger Coachella Valley. And my hope, too, is that, that this can go well, and that maybe other cities can also implement similar programs, because I know we're all facing the similar issues of hiring local staff into our cities when these, when our city jobs are very good-paying and offer pensions, which most jobs don't. So, I really, oh, go ahead. That's all I wanted to say in addition.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I just wanted to flag, I couldn't see the presentation or see, somehow PSC TV was dark while you were presenting. So, I know I spoke to Mayor Protem a few days ago about using local businesses when you're purchasing lunches. It would be great to see our taxpayer dollars go back into our own community and not to large corporations that are based here. So, I think that Mayor Protem Garner intended that as well, and it might be a really cool project to also build up our food system and local, you know, small businesses. I believe Mayor Protem said that. I thought that change was made, but it sounds like what was presented was still non-local businesses.
We made a revision to the actual presentation. I understand that staff, the staff report was published, so the revisions were made in the actual presentation. You said that you weren't able to see them, so that's...
Yeah, for some reason, I wasn't able to actually see it. So, you are recommending local businesses, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much, and really well done, excellently written staff report and well-presented. Thank you very much for your work.
Well, I'm happy to second this motion and move it forward, and every effort that we can make to help promote the young people of our community to go into public service is something that is near and dear to my heart. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
The next item is adoption of an ordinance authorizing military equipment use as required by Assembly Bill 481. I would like a staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Before you, we have a staff report and agenda, excuse me, an ordinance to deal with the military equipment as proposed by Assembly Bill 481. The agenda... The agenda item is a follow-up to a public hearing held on May 12, 2022, City Council meeting regarding the adoption of an ordinance authorizing a military use policy as required by Assembly Bill 481. During the meeting, council requested that the proposed policy include additional clarification on the use of military equipment by allied law enforcement agencies within the city of Palm Springs. The council also requested the policy provide additional detail related to deployment and use of military equipment, including armored vehicles and gas by members of the Palm Springs Police Department. The department is recommending the City Council support and approve its inventory of specialized equipment and adopt a military equipment use policy by ordinance as required by AB 481. I'm happy to answer any questions or clear up anything in the policy that you might have.
Are there any additional questions for the chief? Chief, I think this was brought back for you to identify any differences with other law enforcement agencies that might be working in Palm Springs.
Yes, it was Mayor Middleton, and it's very clear in our policy that when they're operating in the city with our folks, they must abide by our policy. And if our people are operating other places, then we still abide by our policy, including the use of equipment. I do need to point out that there is one caveat, and that is working with the city manager, and in the event of a significant natural disaster or tactical emergency, the chief of police in consultation with the city manager may deploy armored and rescue vehicles or aircraft as needed, but shall inform city council within 30 days about the use of that equipment.
Any questions for the chief? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you so much, Chief, for presenting this and for making recommended changes. Really appreciate your leadership, and thank you for your comments as well. I just wanted to follow up on a few things that you said at the last meeting on this, so the coordination with other jurisdictions. So I think you had flagged that that might be a practical concern for officers, and I just want to make sure that we're getting you what you need, and that it'll work on the ground in case one of these situations happens. So I'm just trying to think through, you know, our officers being responsible for knowing our policies for this equipment and how it might work with coordinating jurisdictions or in other cities or jurisdictions. So can you just walk us through that this is your recommendation, or are there changes that you would recommend?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. What I have proposed here, I am comfortable with for our department, to make sure that we have the adequate resources to handle virtually any event that would take place in the city of Palm Springs. For instance, if a child is lost on the mountain in 122 degrees heat, we need resources to get up there and find that child that we don't currently have on the list before you. But I would feel comfortable speaking with the city manager and being able to deploy, for instance, a drone to look for the child. Same thing with if there was a significant event such as a, you know, as we had here in Palm Springs, you know, with two officers down, we need different pieces of armored equipment that we don't currently have. I feel comfortable deploying that, talking to the city manager about that, and then reporting out to council to make sure it's within your expectations for the city. But it is very clear for us and all of our officers that in order to deploy the equipment that we have listed, that's the only equipment that can be deployed without the consultation with myself and the city manager, and then reporting out to you.
Thank you. So that ability to report out to the council and the public within 30 days gives you that ability to use equipment as needed in case of emergency situations that might not be contemplated here?
Correct.
Thank you. And then I had asked the city attorney ahead of this meeting just about the liability issues for that policy, the coordination with other jurisdictions. So city attorney, if you could just analyze that portion for us, if you see any problems or if that's also your recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Holstich, and thank you for contacting me ahead of time, so I was able to take a look at this. I did look at the language, and I feel that it would be appropriate. I think law enforcement agencies these days are prepared to be nimble enough to be familiar with one another's policies with regard to this type of equipment. I think it would adequately protect the city from a liability perspective.
Thank you. And then, Chief, I have just one more question, I think, for you or for the city attorney. So I know that some organizations have raised issues with the language, you know, including but not limited to saying that the intent of AB 481 was really to specify use, but also knowing that we need flexibility and unforeseen circumstances. So I saw that including but not limited to is still listed as authorized use in most of these categories. Thank you so much, by the way, for the changed language with tear gas to clarify that it won't be used, you know, for people peacefully exercising their First Amendment and that sort of thing. But could you just talk a little bit about including but not limited to, and if we need that language in the authorized use of all of this equipment, or if we could use something like, you know, comparable situations to, or something that doesn't literally include everything, because including but not limited to means everything, right? And it might be too expansive for what AB 481 intends. So could you just give us your thoughts there about what you would recommend for authorized use?
Sure. And in Policy 709, under military equipment, the first sentence, I think, was one of the main things that was objected to, or at least questioned about. It says includes but is not limited to the following. We struck that out of the sentence, so the sentence now reads includes the following, semicolon. Now, if you go through the rest of the policy, there are other places where included but not limited to is mentioned. And if you go to the attachments, I'm turning towards it right now. You'll see under Section 4, under subsection C, under authorized use, it says PSPD policies towards the end of the authorized use paragraph remain in effect to include but not limited to PSPD Policy 706 Vehicle Use, PSPD Policy 409. With that stating is that those policies still, we still have to adhere to our policies. In other words, if you're going to drive a vehicle with your lights and siren on, you have to leave it on the whole time. You can't, you have to drive within the proper speed limit. I mean, the uses are still there, so it's saying that's not the only policies it's limited to. It's limited to our entire policy manual. If you would feel more comfortable with a different phrase than included but not limited to, I'm certainly open to that. I'm not married to that term. The only one that I did see and hear that you might find, it's mentioned four or five different times, but is Section 9, subsection B. It says to limit the escalation of conflict where employed of less lethal force is prohibited or undesirable. Situations for use of the less lethal weapon systems may include but are not limited to. And then it lists some circumstances in which those less lethal weapons may be involved. That certainly can be changed. That sentence is kind of awkward anyway, and I can change that in our policy to make sure that it does not say may include but are not limited to. I think the intent, you know, of when this was put together was to say we can't predict all of the different scenarios that may come our way, from violent destructive behavior to violent riotous crowd control, circumstances where the tactical advantage might be gained. There could be other situations, you know, like, for instance, even potentially vicious animals. I've never seen it used for that, but they're trying to capture all of those. But we can certainly limit it more if you have a different phrase that we could change your policy to make sure it's in line with council's thinking.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I'm trying to follow along with you as quickly as you can go through the policy, so thank you. So I think I'm looking at the specialized equipment in, no, on, so let's talk about, like, page, it says item 3B, page 12 or page 13, right? That's where we are in the staff, in the policy. And so let me find an example here. It looked like most of those, when it says purpose, so look on page 18, item 3B, 18, subsection B, purpose. And then, you know, all of these sort of say may include but are not, it says situations for use of the less lethal weapon systems may include but are not limited to. And that might not be the best example, but it looked like each one of those categories mostly said that phrase. And so, yeah, I think that's my question, if, as an attorney, I know that we say may include but not limited to, not to say that phrase one million times right now, to mean everything, and so it really kind of undermines the purpose of the policy. And so, yeah, if you're okay with, it sounds like the intent is to say situations like these, we can't predict every single one, we might have to use these in situations that aren't on this list, but it doesn't include everything, is language that I would love to see, if you're okay with that.
I am okay, yes, I'm shaking my head, yes, I am okay with council's pleasure on this.
Thank you. I'll see if.
If we can limit it.
Yeah, I'll see if council member, other council members have questions or comments, but I might just ask the city attorney, who's a better attorney than me, if there might be language that we could use that wouldn't be all expansive, but would say, you know, incidents comparable to these listed or something else.
Yes, Councilmember Holstich, if the council's so inclined, we might want to take out the may include but are not limited to from Sections 9B and 10C. Those are really the two sections I see where we're talking about authorized use. As the chief indicated, the other references to include but are not limited to really are referencing other policies that the city already has in place, so I see what he's saying there. The council might want to think about removing the may include but are not limited to, and then at the end of each of those categories, adding language to the effect of or other comparable situations.
Thank you. That's what I would propose to council, if council's so amenable.
I am, I'm comfortable if the chief is, but I want to make sure that the chief is clearly comfortable with any of these changes. None of us know what is going to happen next, but we have been given horrific reminders in the last two weeks of what can go wrong and how badly it can go wrong. And I do not want to take any chances that if some terrible incident happens in our city, that we have inadvertently hamstrung our ability or the police department's ability to respond.
Thank you. I agree.
Yes.
Just to clarify, I agree.
And thank you for that, Mayor Middleton, and Councilmember Holstich. I am very comfortable with putting a parameter on it that would limit it to situations for use of less lethal weapon systems may only be used in comparable situations to the following.
Other comments, questions?
I just want to state for the record that I agree and appreciate that clarification. I think that was a concern of mine as well, that we just continue to make sure that we're very critical of what we're using these items for.
Any other comments?
Can I just have, give me a page number and a change that Councilmember Holstich was referring to and the chief is agreeing to?
It's on bait stamp, page 18 and 19 are the two sections that I was referencing of your staff report.
And the change proposed?
In Sections 9B and 10C, we would take out the may include but are not limited to, and then place at the end of each of those sections, language that says or other comparable situations.
Oops, I'm sorry. So it's page 3B-18?
Correct.
B, purpose?
Correct.
And then under purpose, it is, I don't see the may.
So the second sentence says situations for use of the less lethal weapon systems, we would say include, and then list those five items, and then add a sixth category that says or other comparable situations. And then the same thing on the next page, under Section 10C, authorized use. So it says situations for use of less lethal weapon systems include, list those seven items, and then add an eighth category that says or other comparable situations.
Great, thank you for the clarification.
So is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
And second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero, and we do need to read this title aloud. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, Adopting Palm Springs Police Department Policy Number 709 in accordance with Assembly Bill 481.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Council. We will move on to item 3C, Adoption of an Ordinance, Amending Chapter 106 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code, Community and Improvement Administrative Citation, Section 1172-200 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, the item before you is a proposed amendment to two chapters of the city's municipal code. The first chapter deals with administrative citations. These are similar to parking tickets that folks will sometimes get, usually from more minor code violations of the city's municipal code. The second chapter deals with the city's ability to abate those nuisances. So rather than issue warning letters and citations, some situations call for actual abatement work to occur. And the ordinance proposes a number of amendments to the administrative citation ordinance in order to clarify some provisions that are either ambiguous or conflicting. The ordinance also updates some provisions based on statutory amendments as well as updated case law. And then also, some amendments are provided really just for more flexibility and ease of use in administering these code enforcement tools. Some of the highlights of the proposed amendments include, for the administrative citations, distinguishing between continuing violations, such as building code violations, zoning code violations, electrical code violations that can be corrected with time versus more kind of immediate violations, such as drinking in public or having a fire in public places. Those need correcting immediately rather than giving the person an opportunity to fix the situation. The code also removes a requirement that appeal hearings be held once every month. While the appeals board or the hearing body is certainly welcome to hold as many meetings as they need, we think that a statutory requirement for monthly meetings is a bit excessive. It also clarifies that the hearing officer selection process contained in this citation or in this ordinance takes precedence over the other municipal code provisions dealing with the administrative appeals board. There's a chapter in our municipal code that states that the administrative appeals board hears appeals relating to code enforcement matters, but it's not clear whether the city manager under this chapter retains the authority to have those appeals heard by other hearing officers, and so this would clarify that provision. It also removes language that would allow the city to collect these administrative fines by. by way of a special assessment that's collected against the property. A recent court case said that cities really aren't supposed to be collecting these fines by way of special assessment, so this ordinance takes away that, that authority. One of the major provisions, and I think the council heard a comment from a member of the public or two, is that the ordinance removes the hard and fast 10-day waiting period for correction of violations, and instead requires the code officer to give the property owner or the business a reasonable time period to correct. The reason for that really is because there are some code violations that 10 days, believe it or not, is probably too long for the immediate property owners and neighbors, and they would expect for the code violations to be corrected sooner. And that actually happened within recent history, and I don't know if staff's able to put up a picture, but since I've served as city attorney, we, we had a situation where there was a large pile of junk and debris, and it was an absentee property owner, and the prospect of waiting 10 days was really hard for the neighbors and local residents to, to believe. And so, this would give us flexibility, it could be shorter than 10 days. In other situations, if it's a more significant violation, or correction that needed to be made, then it could be more than 10 days, but this would remove the, the hard and fast 10-day period. The proposed ordinance does remove language that provides for the city manager to cooperate with the neighborhood organizations. That was really taken out only because, quite honestly, we weren't sure how much of that was going on, if the council's concerned with that and would like to have that language remain in there, I don't think staff and certainly the city attorney's office would not have any problem with that. So that's a, a general summary of the provisions. If you have other questions, I'm certainly available to answer those.
Are there questions for staff? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, I appreciate this. On page three, I'm just realizing that there's, the numbering is a little bit different. My goodness. I wish I had done this. Well, let me just describe what it was in my notes, and then we can find it. It was allowing, basically, there was a, a section that said tenants can be held responsible, and I was just concerned about that because it doesn't list the situations in which tenants could be held responsible for a violation. And I know that, I think part of the reason, you know, we had some concern from community members, is there's a lot of renters in desert highlands gateway estates, and a lot of, there's some landlords who are not keeping up the property in the way that they should, and then for that to be put on the tenant is, is pretty burdensome. And I think that there's other, there, and, and just in general for renters, it can be really difficult if they don't have the funds to be maintaining these properties, but really you would expect a landlord to do that, just as they do in apartment buildings, for instance. I know sometimes it's written into the lease that the tenant is responsible, but still, generally, if you're a renter, your income is lower, and things like that, so I just, I'm concerned about the burden.
I think you hit on it when you indicated kind of who's responsible. Again, this is more to provide flexibility, and I think that most situations for significant violations, the city would not issue a citation to the renter, but instead would issue that to the property owner, certainly for habitability issues, other things that, again, really are the responsibility of, of the property owner. I think sometimes with commercial operations, the responsibility for maintenance and operations and activities at the site are really the responsibility of that commercial tenant, and in those situations, I think we want to have the flexibility to, to, to hold the, the business responsible for what's going on in the site.
Thank you, that, that makes a lot of sense. I think my, my general concern with also the time periods as well, that is provided, is, are there going to be parameters that are set out? I mean, it's not listed here in this code, and I, and I understand that it would probably be pretty burdensome, and we are trying to give, because we are trying to give flexibility, but what I think deserves 10 days' notice might be different than what the mayor thinks, you know, so how, how are we going to standardize this in a way that our code officers are being consistent, and that our residents are able to understand what's going on? I just think it can get really subjective and very confusing, and I don't, which I think is probably why these hard and fast rules were in here, but I certainly do understand why we're trying to get more flexibility.
That's always the trade-off, is, is flexibility versus, you know, kind of objectivity. The, the proposed provisions do provide that the city manager and staff can implement regulations. I don't know if we could come up with an exhaustive list, but we could certainly come up with some criteria that we could then run by council at some point, and then have training with the code officers, that way there's kind of a buy-in by the city council, and there's a public opportunity to, to weigh in on what those standards are, and then again, follow up with training.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Woods? I'm sorry.
Thank you, so I think what Mayor Protem was getting into that is the idea of reasonable, you know, and that, that's obviously, we, there's flexibility, is that what I'm understanding with that term?
Correct.
And allows that flexibility, okay. Just, can I ask an example, and I don't know if it applies to this or not, but these are complaints that I've gotten. So a motorhome decides to park on a street in front of, you know, in, in the, in a residential zone, and I think it can be there for 72 hours. Would this apply, or is that the vehicle code, or, you know?
That, that's actually another provision in our municipal code that specifies 72 hours.
Okay, so this won't change that, they still...
Correct.
Okay, so we had an example before I was on council, where a developer, maybe smartly so, built the house 10 feet into the setback, just built it, right? And it came to city council at the time, and they got a whopping $10,000 fine, which is really a smart business move, if you think about it, and it's not good for the neighborhood. How does this address that?
This would allow for imposition of fines for every day that it continues to exist, so if a property owner or a business owner tried to get cute and do something like that, the city would have the authority to impose fines for as long as that condition exists.
But that fine is how much?
The fine is not set out in this, and so one of the follow-up items here would be to come back with a resolution where the council adopts fine amounts by way of resolution.
Okay, so I would just ask that that fine amount, that be thought, that be thought of in the future? Just, just so we're aware of that. Hold on just a second. Oh, so, you know, one of the, the things we had, and I see that we, the city manager through this has, and this is probably a different section of the code, the city manager has the opportunity, under this proposal, to assign who hears the appeals. That's correct? Our current appeals board, we had some issues where they were actually changing the amount of fines, which I don't think was in their purview. Is that another part of the code, or is this going to deal with that?
This actually addresses that issue, and there was a conflict between the provision, the, kind of the enabling ordinance for the appeals board, that enabling ordinance says that they are not allowed to modify the dollar amounts, that they're essentially factfinders. This ordinance, as it currently exists, suggests that the hearing officer, whether that be the appeals board, or an independent hearing officer, can change the, the fine amounts, and so the proposed revision to this ordinance brings this ordinance in line with the appeals board, and says that the hearing officer, whoever it is, whether it's the appeals board or an independent hearing officer, cannot modify the dollar amounts, that they're essentially a factfinder.
Great, thank you. I think that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, I know there's, this was some, this was one that I didn't expect to have as many comments on as I do. I, I am interested in the neighborhood cooperation piece. I, I don't remember the exact language as it was before, but I think the, the point still remains that, as I said, there's certain areas of our city that have different issues in terms of landscaping, for instance, you go to Las Palmas, it's almost pristine, it's different, in desert highlands, it's different, and veterans tract, and I think, I know that that's part of the concern, right, is that there, there are community groups that are very active, and they can often assist in homeowners improving their properties, or they can step in, and so I think that's part of why there's, there's a need for it, but I also don't want it to be overly burdensome and slow things down. I think if we're able to provide a, almost as a heads up, hey, this is what's going on, would you like to engage with us? Most of the time, I'm thinking probably not, which is why we're removing it, but that would be a, a question I have as well. If there's a, if there's a history of this causing problems to delay code, then that's one thing, but if it's just not being used, okay, the city attorney's shaking his head.
Yes.
So since it's just simply not being used, I think it would be helpful if we can at least work with those neighborhood groups that are active in their communities, and can probably help us to better resolve these issues. Does that make sense to city manager?
Yeah, if I might, it absolutely makes sense. I think to the extent that coordination with the neighborhoods contemplates what we do currently with One PS, where they have a code committee and they're very active in this space, it makes perfect sense. I think what might be administratively more burden is if every time we issue a citation, we're expected to coordinate or, or collaborate and, and have an exchange with a neighborhood group, or seek input. So if it's kind of in general, opposed to case by case, I think that makes a lot of sense for exactly the reason you described, that they can identify issues, they can offer assistance in resolving issues, et cetera.
Thank you, yeah, I think that's generally what it is, and just to be, for instance, if there's larger issues, right? I mean, if there are those bigger cases, that there's obviously a homeowner that needs help, reaching out to the neighborhood group would make sense. If it's a small potatoes kind of thing, I, I don't think there's a, a need in the same way.
If I could, particularly when it comes to the area of homes that have fallen into derelict treatment, my experience across the city is, there are a number of different reasons for that. In some instances, we are dealing with absentee owners that have all of the means in the world to be able to remedy the situation, but are not doing so. We've had a number of homes that I've become aware of, where there is a owner of the home who is elderly and has been in long-term care, and the heir, the potential heirs are unwilling to make any investment until after the passing of their relative, and those are always very difficult and troublesome situations. We have individuals for whom there's hoarding, and that is largely a mental illness, and yet there is the means to be able to take and respond. We also have situations where we're dealing with seniors, and sometimes with others that just simply do not have the financial capability to catch up. I think we need to be cognizant of who we're dealing with in each one of the situations, and I don't know quite how to write the law that takes and addresses all of those. What I would like to see us look at, as we're coming forward with the budget, is to create what I don't think will need to be a large fund, but a fund that would allow, in situations where the renter or the landlord is just simply physically or economically unable to respond, that we can help them to get that response and, and get that, the work done. But in many instances, these are public health situations that create all of the opportunities for, for vermin and for other things to happen that are truly need to be addressed. Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you, Mayor Middleton. I completely agree that the city should, we should consider creating a fund to help low-income people, or seniors, or people on a fixed income, who, who can't address some of these issues. So thank you for that idea, I think it's great, and I'd love to see us move in the direction of assisting tenants and homeowners, especially those who are unable to pay, instead of criminalizing or penalizing code compliance issues when it's not that level. So I know we heard some really passionate comments against this ordinance today in public comment, so if staff could just detail for us, because this is the first, I think, that I'm hearing about this ordinance, why it came forward, because I don't think it was requested by council, and then if you could just address the public's questions and concerns about this. So the, you know, property abatement programs in Coachella and Indio that were leaving, leading to the removal of people from homes, the concerns about burdens on tenants, when really it's landlord's responsibilities, and then the ask to, instead of criminalizing, using proactive programs to help clean up some of these issues. So can you just respond to the public, please?
I, I can certainly try. This came about really as a result of the city attorney's office and the code enforcement departments increasing kind of exasperation from, from residents with the amount of time that it sometimes takes to resolve code cases, and so we looked at the, the ordinance to see if we could streamline some of the provisions, and as, as I mentioned, there were some that just really need to be updated as a matter of law, because cases and statutes have changed. With regard to the situation in Indio, that really was an extreme case in terms of what, what those attorneys were doing, they were essentially bringing criminal cases and incurring significant dollar amounts on behalf of the city, and then imposing those on property owners and tenants, really for fairly minor code violations. The city certainly does not have a practice of doing that, and in fact, since I've been here, I can only think of one case that we've brought criminally for a continuing violation, and that was for a, a property owner who continued to, to rent out a vacation rental, notwithstanding the fact that their permit had been revoked, and they just continued blatantly ignoring the city's code requirements. So we use the criminal process very infrequently. In terms of assessing properties and potentially leading to property owners losing their houses, as I mentioned, this code removes the ability of the city to impose special assessments for the amount of the administrative fine. I think that was all, were there other ones, Councilmember Holstidge, that I did not address?
Thank you so much for that, and appreciate that, and all your work cleaning up our code, because, yes, often our code is extremely outdated, or worry, or too complicated, and appreciate the changes that you've made. So thank you for bringing that forward. Let me see, I had a question, so the landlord-tenant issue, can you explain that? I know Mayor Protem Garner raised that as well, so your recommendation in terms of putting the, the aid in a bet for tenants, when typically landlords are responsible for nuisance or blight issues?
My recommendation for that would be to, to keep the language that's being proposed for amendment tonight, but direct staff to come up with some administrative regulations that kind of give some guidance to our code officers as to when we would hold a tenant responsible versus a property owner, and again, as I mentioned, it's mostly in the commercial settings that we would want to hold the, the tenant responsible. Most of the times, for, at least for serious code violations in residential settings, it's the property owner who has the legal responsibility to maintain the, the covenant of habitability. So, so guidelines, administrative guidelines, and then training by code staff would be my recommendation. recommendation.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's a little hard to pass a policy not knowing what those administrative regulations are going to be, since I am very concerned and we heard public comment about the burden on tenants, especially if you have slum lords. We have slum lords here in Palm Springs who really take advantage of tenants and, you know, this is just another avenue for that. So I would be concerned about that on the residential side, not on the commercial side as much, although that is still a concern as well. Because we have so many older buildings that might, you know, violate code but really are the landlord's responsibility.
One suggestion might be to, this is a first reading. Ordinances require two readings. Perhaps if the council is otherwise okay with the provisions, you could do the first reading. We could come back with those guidelines and the dollar amounts for the administrative fines at second reading, and that way you have a chance to keep the process moving forward. But you can always stop it at second reading if you're not comfortable with those administrative issues.
Thank you, that would work for me. And I would also like Councilmember Kors's eyes on this, since he often has some, you know, issues there as well. I got a question about the distinction between code enforcement officers and public safety officers and authorizing both to issue notices to correct administrative citations. And I got some concern in emails and comments that it might deter people from calling the police if they need, you know, if they're experiencing domestic violence or what have you, they need assistance from public safety officers and they're worried that the police are going to find them for a code violation. So can you explain why that change was made and if you have a recommendation there?
The current ordinance references a public safety officer and distinguishes that from an enforcement officer. And it has a provision that says that if a violation is an immediate threat to life and safety, then the citation needs to be, or the issue needs to be referred to a public safety officer, meaning a police officer or a firefighter. We've removed that provision. We don't know if that's really necessary to be mandated in this ordinance. We would expect that if that's the situation, our code officers are going to do that as a matter of course without it having to be in the ordinance. So I don't think that this change is necessarily going to create more of a concern or should create more of a concern. It really just removes what we think is a little bit of extra language from the ordinance.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I am interested if we can kind of separate out the commercial versus the residential tenants a little bit. I do think there is a difference, although I do want to state that there are a lot of small businesses that struggle with their landlords as well. So it isn't just the residential that I am concerned about, but I do think there's a distinction in what we expect of commercial tenants versus residential tenants. And I, I don't know why I have a memory of there being a distinction before, maybe there wasn't. And the other thing is that I would like to see us adding back that, the neighborhood piece that I discussed and then coming back with that administrative regulations and training piece in the second reading. And otherwise, I think I'm fine with moving forward to the second reading and being able to further assess at the second reading if there's something. But one quick thing that I wanted to mention is I also agree with the mayor and councilmember Holstich about the landscaping. I think it's something that we've kind of brought up over and over again through the, throughout the last year or so. And I think it's really important. Habitat for Humanity will do services for low-income seniors only. That's how we did a home on, in the north end of town, but they're also limited as well. So, but there are a lot of people who are interested in landscaping who aren't necessarily low-income either but could use some assistance. So it could be an opportunity to assist neighbors, and a neighbor's helping neighbor's way. So I really appreciate that, mayor, bringing that up, and just want to offer my additional support for that.
And that goes beyond just landscaping sometimes. We're talking about issues in the home. Yeah, I appreciate the distinction between commercial and residential. I am not comfortable with us coming to a place where we make an assumption a priori that it is always the landlord that is necessarily responsible. We have encountered wrongdoing on the part of both landlords and tenants, and I want our staff to be able to be in a position to come to a judgment as to who should be held responsible, who is contributing the public health concerns.
Yeah, I would really caution against making any hard and fast rules or hard and fast distinctions in an ordinance. You know, for example, a noise violation, you know, we may want to address noise violations with warning letters and administrative citations. Those aren't necessarily the property owner's responsibility, those are the occupants. Obviously, if it's a collapsing roof, that's going to be the property owner's responsibility. So while guidelines and training are probably important, I would really recommend against putting those kind of distinctions in an ordinance.
And if I can, Madam Mayor?
Please.
Thank you, Mayor Middleton. And I don't think I was suggesting putting those distinctions into the ordinance, it's just that there's a power dynamic between landlords and tenants where a landlord has the ability to evict a tenant, you know, for cause if they're creating a nuisance. I think that's a three-day notice, so they can get someone out really quickly, depending on what their lease says. But the tenant does not have equal power. So personally, I'm going to vote no on this ordinance because I can't support it as is the way it's written for landlords and tenants, and I don't have the language to prove in front of me. That's not to say that I don't support it moving forward for a second reading and we can have the admin regulations and know what that's going to look like, but I can't support it without knowing that. But understanding that, you know, that will be defined before it's approved.
Councilmember Woods, I see a light on, I'm not...
I, thank you for bringing it forward. I think we need to clean it up. I think it's important to clean it up, and I think we need to have clarity for both, not only us as an organization, but for all our residents, so that they know what to expect, how to expect it, whether you're on the complaining side or on the citation side, just so that it's clear to everyone. So I appreciate that. I do have a question, it may be coming back as we do the fee schedule for it, but, you know, something like Serena Park, which is a huge piece of property that has not been maintained appropriately. The fine, I think, for something like that should be much different than a single-family home, that maybe their tree limbs fell, like the mayor was saying earlier. So I just want to throw that into the mix because it's really, you know, and the same thing with, off of Baristo, where we have the church property that's being made into a hotel. You know, when they don't maintain it, I think we need more teeth. But whether it be higher fines or whatever, and it should be considered as we do the fine schedule. I assume this will cover all of that?
The fine schedule will, yes.
Yes, good, thank you.
Are there any other further comments? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I feel like we're raising quite a few questions. And so I'm wondering, Mayor, your thoughts on getting, having this come back to us but not actually moving forward with a vote, just in light of how many questions have been raised and how many different things we're wanting to look at first?
So, I'm largely supportive of what I see. And I appreciate that there are some clarifications that need to be brought forward. And I'd like to ask the city manager, the city attorney, as to whether you would prefer to have time to address some of the questions and issues that have been raised and bring this back for another reading before we move on to take a vote.
From the city attorney's perspective, it's entirely council's pleasure. If you'd like to have these issues addressed before you do the first reading, the city attorney's office has no problem with that.
So, given that we, I, I want to see us move forward. I don't think that we necessarily have to move forward this evening with it. And I would be supportive of continuing to a date to be determined by staff to clean up a couple of the items that have been raised. But I do that saying, I think there are public health issues that are here and there are sign, and I appreciate that there are folks who just can't address the issues. There are an awful lot of folks in town who have created public nuisances, who have all of the means in the world to address them and won't do so until they're told that you have to. Do we need to take a vote to continue?
No.
Mayor, or Councilmember Holstich? And then Councilmember Woods?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you for the recommendation to do a continuance. I want to hear staff's recommendation about what's needed and when. But I'm also wondering if council agrees that staff could also assess creating a fund, like we heard in public comment. I think Charlie Urban raised that, to proactively help folks clean up houses and yards, and especially people who can't afford it or might need that assistance. So can we include that? What's the timeline there and workload? If staff could respond about the urgency for this ordinance, if we should move it forward, if it's okay to continue to a date uncertain?
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I also wanted to just share that a home repair program, which we have been working towards, can help with code enforcement violations and corrections. So that is already in motion.
Sorry, can you say more? I know we have a home repair program and we only fund it $10,000 a year, which is really, really minimal compared to the city budget. So is that what you mean? Or you mean bringing forth another fund to help with code compliance abatement?
I was referring to that program, and my understanding is there is a desire to look at expanding that program.
Thank you, I think so. You know, for me, I think that this is very important and we need to clean up the ordinance, and I support most of the changes here, but you heard some fear from our community members about how this might be implemented. And it does seem like, you know, adding to the hammer that we use. I mean, I think, you know, most people probably need those carrots to comply better, and that will just get us better results in the long run. So we need both, but I'd like to do them together if we can, or at least have the, you know, more than $10,000 a year from all, for all of our residents in that fund so that we really can make a difference.
Mayor Protem, or Councilmember Woods, did you have...
No, I was just going to ask a clarifying question. Is it better to bring it back or bring it back for a second reading, since there seems to be just a couple items? Just, and I don't know the procedural process with that, and if it helps expedite what Councilmember Holstich was talking about.
There's no real urgency. This is one of those cleanup items. I don't think if the council wants to have some items clarified, the city attorney's office has no concern with that at all.
And then, the other question with that then is, you know, we talked about some stuff where we might want to look at fines, the house too close, you know, bigger lots, things of that nature. What's the gap between making this change and actually getting, updating that fine schedule?
I think probably not next council meeting, but the second meeting in June is probably realistic to bring that forward.
Both of them, both, oh, thank you, great. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. The one thing, just I want to clarify with the home repair program as it currently stands, that $10,000 is from CDBG funds. So I know that when we were discussing this before, it was to create an additional fund that's separate from CDBG, because CDBG requires a considerable amount of documentation. I did help a homeowner with that. We couldn't even finish it unfortunately because she simply didn't have the documentation that the federal government requires, even though she was clearly in need. So I think that was why it was raised on our side, just to clarify. But I also still continue, support the continuance because I think generally with our second readings, this is just for the public, it comes back on consent. And I think it would be nice to be able to ask any other clarifying questions if they arise.
So I'll make a motion to continue to a date to be determined by staff, and for staff to take under advisement all of the many comments that you've heard this evening. And clearly, something north of $10,000 is what I was thinking of for the fund. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. Motion and a second roll call.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
All right. So we only have two items left. Do we need, though, to take a break? Because we have been at this for a little while. Okay. Then we will take a 10-minute break and then resume. Thank you. We will resume after our recess, and welcome again to Councilmember Aiden. Next item is 3C, approval of three traffic calming requests in the amount of $250,000. We're going to take 3C in two parts. We're going to deal with the requests from the desert, that involve the Desert Highland neighborhood and the Melody Ranch neighborhood, which Councilmember Woods is able to participate in. And then we will, after completing those, deal with the Little Tuscany neighborhood traffic calming modification, for which, based on residents, Councilmember Woods is not able to participate in. So, staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Joel Montalvo, City Engineer. The item before you is culmination of staff's efforts with the community for traffic calming projects. The item presents three different traffic calming requests that have followed the procedures outlined in the city's neighborhood traffic calming program, and are now recommended for approval by the, for the City, by the City Council and implementation by city staff. The Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program addresses many traffic-related issues by working closely with residents to identify existing problems, define neighborhood goals, and develop neighborhood support. The program relies heavily on community participation and action. After development of a neighborhood-driven traffic calming plan, actions may be implemented using a staged approach. The first traffic calming project is located in the Desert Highland Gateway Estates neighborhood. The residents of the Desert Highland Gateways Estates neighborhood submitted a community action request form to evaluate if rubberized speed cushions would be warranted on East Gate Road between Tranview Road and Rosa Parks Road. Staff evaluated the request and collected the appropriate data, and found that the speed cushions are warranted. Staff recommends approval of the installation of the speed cushions. The second traffic calming project is located on, in the Melody Ranch neighborhood. The traffic calming request is the last phase in a previously approved traffic calming project. The community requested electronic feedback signs as part of a larger traffic calming request that included the installation of lane parking lines to narrow the roadway, and the installation of two standard speed limit signs on Seven Lakes Drive in an effort to reduce speed. The City Council had given staff the authority to install the feedback signs if the data supported them, as there were certain members of the community that did not want the speed feedback signs installed. Staff had postponed the installation of the electronic feedback signs until data was collected, with the installation of the lane parking lines and the additional speed limit signs. Data was collected in October of '21 to test the effectiveness of the traffic calming measures that were installed. The data collected found that the original traffic calming installation measures were not really effective in reducing the speed in the area. It did appear that the residents noticed a decrease in speeding, but it wasn't really effective. So, staff today is requesting the approval of this item to fund and purchase the installation of the electronic feedback signs. That's my report on those two items. I can take questions, and be happy to answer any.
Are there questions for staff?
There's a question there.
Yes.
Councilmember Aiden has a question. Joel, thank you for your report. We got an email, and I know we followed this for over two years between the neighborhoods. We got an email just about notice to the neighborhoods. So, can you just go over what, how this was noticed, and what work you did?
So...
My residents.
I did talk to staff about the email, and we did notify the neighborhood organization that actually started the request. It was around two months ago, I believe, we notified them, saying that this is moving forward, we are going to install them. And I believe that email may have come from another neighborhood organization that was not the originator of the community action request form. I believe that's how the communication broke down.
Thank you. And just for the record, I reached out to a number of the One PS chairs of different neighborhood organizations, and board members, and people were generally supportive of this project moving forward. So, thank you for your work.
Don't want to jump ahead of anyone else, but I'd move to approve.
I would second that.
Roll call?
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garner?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
So, we will excuse Councilmember Woods, and Joel, go ahead with the third item.
Okay. So, the final traffic calming project is in the Little Tuscany neighborhood. So, this is, this is a comparison, or a discussion about roundabouts versus chicanes. There is a lot of history here, so I am going to read through it. Hopefully, I don't sound too robotic, but I do need to get through the history. A lot of it predates my staff, myself. So, I'm going to go through it, try to explain what has occurred, at least from my perspective, and then we can get into the conversation about roundabouts versus chicanes, if that's okay. So, let me start by, in 2015, representatives of the Little Tuscany neighborhood met with staff to discuss possible traffic calming measures to implement along West Racket Club Road. A community action request form was submitted in accordance with our program, and to study the area and create some sort of measures, working together with the working group. In September of 2016, the City Council actually authorized $30,000 for the installation of robot, sorry, tongue tied, rubberized speed cushions, or speed humps, at two locations on West Racket Club, as requested and approved by the Little Tuscany neighborhood in accordance with our program. However, in October of 2016, the little, the organization submitted a formal request to the Assistant City Manager to consider roundabouts in lieu of rubberized speed cushions, and for a more rigorous traffic calming measure on West Racket Club. During that year, the Little Tuscany neighborhood working group met with staff and the city to develop a conceptual design to install the three roundabouts on West Racket Club Road. Staff actually engaged with our consultant, and produced a concept design that would install the three roundabouts on West, listen, West Racket Club. The conceptual designs were reviewed and approved by the neighborhood. The proposed locations for the roundabouts were Janus Drive at Racket Club, Palermo Drive at Racket Club, and Cadreel Avenue at Racket Club. Listen. So, in November of 2017, staff presented two options for traffic calming within the Little Tuscany neighborhood to the City Council, the speed cushions or roundabouts. Staff also presented to the City Council the limited amount of funding available for traffic calming at that time. Based on the limited amount of funding available at the time, staff recommended installing speed cushions. At the time, Webb had prepared a cost estimate for construction of the roundabouts. The cost estimate was around $230,000. So, during that meeting, the City Council approved staff's recommendation to install speed cushions and deferred the installation of the roundabouts. After that council decision in 2017, residents of that neighborhood opposed the installation of speed cushions, and they really wanted that to be deferred, and staff continued working with the working group on alternatives. So, around 2018, staff met again with residents and look at, to review and try to find other alternatives. The alternatives, one of the alternatives that was landed upon was chicane. So, essentially, a chicane is a horizontal deflection in the road. It's, it acts as a traffic calming device. It narrows the road down, or it actually makes the driver turn and pay attention when they're driving. And what came of that was installation of temporary chicanes using bollards and other, you know, street signs that we typically use. And what we found, that the initial installation of the temporary chicanes was effective in slowing traffic down. However, the neighborhood really felt that, that it was unsightly. The aesthetics of the temporary chicanes was not very, you know, pleasing to the eye, and they really wanted staff to pursue a different alternative, or something that was more permanent. So, in March, let me see, so the working group also brought forward the concerns of aesthetics. The large diameter plastic bollards were not appealing. So, at that time, staff requested additional funding to modify the existing chicanes and take out the bigger bollards to make it a little bit more pleasing to the eye. In March of 2022, staff met with the members of the working group and Councilmember Woods to discuss the next steps at this location. At this meeting, staff explained to the working group that if they wished to pursue roundabouts, that the City Council would have to approve that request and the necessary funding for the roundabouts. I explained to the working group that if the roundabouts were approved instead of the chicanes, that the roundabout would become an actual capital project, would then be listed in our five-year CIP, and then would be prioritized accordingly, together with every other CIP project that we have. So, at the time, staff recommended that, to the working group, that we should proceed with chicanes, so that they are a little bit less costly, and they could be implemented with our traffic calming program instead of the five-year CIP. So, at this point, staff brought this forward, introduced... So at this point, staff brought this forward, introducing the two concepts, the chicanes, the roundabout, and is looking for council direction to see which would the council prefer. That was a lot.
That was a lot, Joel.
Happy to answer your questions. Hopefully, I didn't go too fast. If there's anything I can clarify, please let me know.
So anybody, Mayor Protim.
Thank you for that. I really feel for the Little Tuscany Working Group. They've been going back and forth with staff for a while. I'm still a little bit confused about the chicanes and what they exactly look like. Are the chicanes what's there right now? Because I was so, I, for context, I walked the road. It's, yeah, yesterday? Yes, yesterday, I walked all the way up. And so I'm a little bit confused about what it is that I actually saw.
So the chicanes that are out there, it's a very temporary measure to try to emulate what a physical barrier would do if it was located in the middle of the street. It doesn't really, I mean, when you're driving, the chicane, the actual posts that are in the ground do catch your attention, the striping catches your attention, so it kind of forces you to slow down a little bit. But I believe over time, if you see that often enough, people just kind of speed through it, because they're not really in danger of hurting their vehicle, if you will. But a real chicane is actually a physical barrier, a raised barrier, that actually makes the driver turn and change direction, if you will, as you're driving up or down the street.
Okay, so what I saw when I took my walk was these temporary chicanes. I mean, I did notice that there was different striping and things on the road, I just didn't know that that's what, I was still confused about what they were called.
Right, and it was, that was staff's attempt, working with the working group, to emulate something, to show that something can be done and to show if it could be effective. And the original design with the bigger barriers was effective. Data was taken, and it did slow traffic down.
Okay, so then, if we were to approve the chicanes instead of the roundabouts, because I'm understanding that the big issue here, too, is the cost differential, the chicanes would actually look much nicer and be more effective once, once permanent.
Well, I won't talk to the aesthetics. It is going to be a curb in the median, it's like a median, it is, but definitely more pleasing to the eye than what's out there today.
I guess what my, what I'm trying to understand is, are, they seem to both be effective, and it seems like one is just more aesthetically pleasing than the other. And what, and I'm still confused about what exactly the cost difference is going to be.
We didn't really get into cost analysis, we had, because, but we did sort of, well, at least try to figure out what the cost difference would be. And sort of my very rough estimate right now, a chicane, the chicanes, if implemented, would be somewhere between $150,000 to $250,000, roundabouts, if implemented as designed. Originally, in 2017, there were 230, with all the cost escalations and the design, I think that would be more like a $500,000, $600,000 project.
Okay.
Especially, I know the community also wants it to be, even if we go with the chicanes, they want it to be aesthetically pleasing. So it's not going to be a standard, just curb. There's going to be a lot of work that needs to be done to go either way.
Thank you.
So the question I have, and I've actually become something of a fan of roundabouts when they're done properly and correctly, and we've, I think most of us have seen them when they're not. Are chicanes and roundabouts equally effective at traffic calming, or is one more designed for traffic calming and the other for regulation of traffic moving?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I myself have not studied in depth what the difference between the two are. I would say a chicane is more intended to calm traffic, and a roundabout would need to direct traffic, to go around. But by going and directing traffic around and slowing down, it does essentially lower speeds.
And so there is, the chicane is less expensive?
Relatively, yeah, relative to a roundabout, there is less concrete work to be done. Depending on how much of the aesthetics is developed, the cost could grow, for sure.
So I've not walked the road, but I've driven it many times, and clearly, we need to do something to slow traffic down on that roadway, and the stripes in the road, folks have definitely figured out they can ignore them.
It was a very temporary measure.
So I think it's a question of what do we do? From a pedestrian standpoint, is there any advantage to one versus the other?
So right now, the road does not have sidewalk. Pedestrians are walking in the street. I think as a bigger project, and when we bring forward the pedestrian master plan, I think this road is identified as installing sidewalks. So that would take the pedestrians essentially out of the picture. For today, if they're walking in the streets, I think they are both, I think, are, they act the exact same way. When you build a roundabout, you're going to have to widen the street, depending on the design of it, right? You're going to have to design around the roundabout, and the pedestrians should be taken into consideration. One of the things that I believe Councilmember Woods mentioned when he was speaking as a resident, that we should take into consideration pedestrians, bicyclists, when we're designing, and that's what we would instruct our traffic designers to do.
I think that's very important, that we consider pedestrian and biking as we move Councilmember Holstich, do you have questions or comments?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask very broadly for the public, because we always get emails and questions about how certain neighborhood traffic calming projects move forward and how they don't, and obviously, there's issues of equity, and we're just talking about investments the city makes in the different neighborhoods. So can you just explain how projects get submitted to the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program and how these were selected? And I'm a little, one reason I'm asking this is because you're the city engineer, and you're an expert, and I'm not an engineer, and, you know, some community members, right, don't know what these, what the impacts will be on traffic and traffic calming. So can you just, and I really want your explanation as an expert engineer about what would be best to reduce speed in that neighborhood and what that value is. So can you just explain how those projects get selected, and then how much control a neighborhood has to pick which option works best for them versus when we're prioritizing staff recommendation based on engineering expertise?
Well, I will attempt to answer your questions as best as I can. So the community action request form, or the community, the traffic calming program was developed a while ago by the city. It is, on our website, any, any community can access the program, read through it, get neighborhood support, fill out the community action request form, and submit it for staff consideration. So we get, I'm just going to use some round numbers here, 20 to 30 community action request forms every year, or, you know, it varies, really. And they range in their scope. So what staff does is takes the initial step, they take the application in, they review it, then they start working with a neighborhood lead or the work group. From the work group, we establish, you know, who's really interested. Typically, it's the people that sign the form. That working group then develops what they want to do, what their requests are with staff, and then we move along. We get input from the rest of the residents, depending who's going to be impacted, and depending on what type of traffic calming is requested. And then we go through a process to evaluate whether costs, whether it's feasible to do a certain type of traffic calming. We do issue suggestions, or we come up with the right traffic calming implementation for the neighborhood or for the situation. And then it goes through a process of having the community itself garner support from the rest of the residents. We get to a point where we actually survey the residents and get feedback from the neighborhood, and we have a certain percentage, I think it's, I think we need, I can't, I'm not going to be able to quote it properly today, but there's a certain percentage that we need to get responses from and in favor of a project so it can move forward. A lot of these community action request forms or requests essentially die because they don't garner enough support. There's others where we move forward through the entire process, we actually get council approval, and then we start implementing, and it lands on a certain person's front yard or close to their home, and they really were, thought they were left out of the process, and we go through, you know, back and forth, and we have to cancel the program because they were not in favor of the implementation. And sometimes it breaks down, and with staff, we don't have enough map, you know, power or manpower, I was going to say, but we don't have enough staff to actually go and canvass the neighborhood and do all the surveying. We let the working group do that for themselves. So that's essentially how these projects develop, and they dwindle down. If you get 20, they dwindle down to about three to four that actually get approved, and then we move them forward for, for council consideration. So the staff, our staff doesn't pick the projects. They develop from the neighborhood down to where we get it approved and seek approval from council.
And then we independently might look at public works projects for engineering needs for pedestrian safety or biker safety or speed, right? That's how some of our other traffic calming projects have been done. So it could be staff or council generated that way, and then this is the way it's community-generated?
Correct, correct. And I tried to use a traffic calming program directly with, that associated with neighborhood organizations, submitted through the community action request form. Anything other than that becomes a capital project that staff is developing. So to, a distinction between the neighborhood organization's requests and staff's, you know, priorities.
Thank you, and is this a common program that a lot of cities use, to have these requests for engineering improvements by consensus in a neighborhood or by this democratic process, which is great?
I couldn't speak to that. I never, I haven't really researched. I'm assuming other cities do. I worked at a previous city that didn't have a, such as a robust program.
Yeah, and for council, I'm just raising this because I know we've talked about equity and invest, equitable investments through the city, and we've also talked about, you know, 1PS and the involvement of certain, you know, residents who have more time to advocate for a project versus others who do not. And so just so you know, that's why I was asking, because it seems like, you know, it's important to have a data-driven approach here. But I support the program, I was just wondering, since there is, because we do a lot, it takes a lot of people power. I think you're going to say, man, woman, people power, to build these up, and then, like you said, you know, there's the property owner who doesn't want it right there, and then all that work is for naught, and that just seems like an inefficient system to me, but democracy is inefficient. Okay, so that's primarily the questions that I had for staff.
I did have the opportunity to talk with the city manager regarding the pros and cons of chicanes versus roundabouts earlier this week, so perhaps you could give us some of your experience in this choice.
Sure, so caveat being that I'm not an engineer of any kind, let alone a traffic engineer, but I have worked in a couple of communities that have deployed these kinds of improvements, and I've served on some state transportation advisory commissions that were very active. One of the things that I've seen is chicanes are often used on straightaway roads where there are no intersections. The city engineer mentioned that oftentimes roundabouts are really directing traffic, and it's often at an intersection, and especially a problem intersection, which is not to say that they can't function independently, even on a straight section of street, but I think the chicanes do this, a similar job with less overall improvement and with, generally within the roadway, opposed to expanding the roadway to accommodate the circle. Similarly, I think in both cases, geometry really matters. So I've seen chicanes that are, where bike lanes go behind the chicane, for instance, if the roadway permits that kind of width. Roundabouts, at least in all of the applications I've been part, cyclists generally enter the roundabout, which is a little more vulnerable, and pedestrians cross near but not within the roundabout, which also, given the traffic movement, is not ideal. So I've worked in a couple situations where they had to be engineered very carefully, and I've seen a lot of them be engineered poorly. I think you mentioned early on in comments you've seen the same. When they're too small, people can drive straight through. When they're too big, you have other challenges, especially with right-of-way, et cetera. So I think both applications work. One of the bigger questions might be, what is the balance between accommodating the desires of neighbors? And I should add, I've never seen roundabouts in a community that don't have a, their fair share of detractors. Even after many years. I worked for one community 15 years ago, and still some people run for council on the ticket of tearing out the roundabout, because they're just, they're not universally loved. That's not to say people in the neighborhood or anybody else would dislike them. And sometimes it's just a matter of what is cost-effective. Again, I think the chicanes are generally lower impact and accomplish something similar, but both, I think, can be effective when used properly.
So I think they both can be used effectively as well. I'm not sure that I have seen roundabouts on what are essentially three-way roads, because what we have here on Racket Club is, to the north is vacant land. There's no crossings, street, there are intersecting streets. Am I right or wrong on?
There is a pretty good example in La Quinta. They implemented this in a road that's very similar to this application. It was through an active transportation grant. So La Quinta in the downtown has implemented quite a few roundabouts, and some of them do mirror or look very similar to what this would look like.
In terms of these projects, which would be able to be completed faster? What is the timeline for chicanes versus roundabouts? Also, chicanes is a, I don't know where the, I want to look at the etymology of that word now.
It is an interesting word. Every time I say it or write it, it does, I have to think about it. I would say that a roundabout, we would have to engage our engineering consultant, the timeline would increase. Again, I would put that project as a capital project. It would be then, you know, prioritized with the, with the other capital projects that we have going on. The chicane, I think it's a smaller project. It also is impactful, it's going to take some time to design. So if I were to say we're going to start the chicane design, you know, in the next fiscal year, I'd say within a year and a half, we would probably be able to complete it. If we're going to start the roundabout design, comparing that or using, you know, the metric of all our other capital projects, I think it would be longer. I'd say in the two-to-three or four-year range.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I think, you know, I also recently spoke with a resident who lives up at Racket Club as well, and she was requesting sidewalks, which we just discussed, and I had actually just talked to Justin about that. So I think there, and she had the same concern, right? There's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of cyclists and pedestrians that use it, and it would be nice to have a sidewalk. So I think that what I'm hearing from the public and seeing from my own experience taking that road as pedestrian, we want something in place sooner than later. And so I'm interested in moving forward with the chicanes for that, for that reason, and it looks like once they're permanent, we can make it a much nicer view, so to speak, rather than what's there now, which I agree is a little ugly and confusing if you don't understand why it's there.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Just one, I'll second, because I think the timeliness does matter. But I would like us to, in the course of all of the many, many, many other things we've given you to do, to at some point take a look at whether or not to at some point take a look at whether or not a conversion to roundabouts in many locations would be something that would be advisable from a traffic management standpoint. And I know we're not taking any new requests right now, but we'll put that on the parking list. Is there any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Holstage?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero with one recusal.
Bring, all right. We will move on to item three E, which is a review of the modified franchise agreement for solid waste collection services.
Madam Mayor and members of council, as we begin this discussion item this evening, I just want to do a brief introduction. Number one, I want to thank Mr. Patrick Talarico, who originally initiated this as our Office of Sustainability Manager last fall. And I'd also like to introduce and thank Tracy Sheldon, who has stepped into that role in Patrick's absence, and has managed this process and gotten us to where we are today. And so it's through Tracy's efforts that we are here this evening with an updated franchise agreement for your consideration. I would like to also introduce Ms. Joanna Jin, who was with Best, Best and Krieger. She is representing the city as our attorney on this project, and has been very instrumental in developing the franchise agreement that we have before us. We also have Mr. Chris Cunningham of Palm Springs Disposal Service, who will be making a brief presentation following Ms. Jin. And then on Zoom, we have Mr. Enrique Vasquez, who is with Sloan-Vasquez McAfee, who is the city's consultant relative to solid waste. And so they have provided counsel to us as well. With that, again, thanks to the team for their work on the franchise agreement, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Jin, who will go ahead and make the presentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Flynn. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. My name is-
I'm sorry to interrupt. Madam Mayor, it's approaching 9:00 PM, and this item is likely to take a little while. Would you like to take public comment for non-agenda items at this time?
Do we have?
We do have two present in the chamber.
If you don't mind, it's our tradition, and thank you for correcting, bringing that to my attention.
We have Attorney Monroe Maybon, followed by Brad Anderson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, staff. I'm Attorney Monroe Maybon. I and my associate Barry Bell, Barry Bidet, represent the survivors and descendants of Section 14. It has been my practice, and that of my associate, wherever possible, to engage in conciliation as opposed to confrontation. We are here this evening to personally introduce ourselves and to state that we believe that reasonable minds, through decent and order discussions, can come to a resolution. We seek an urgency in a matter of concern to our clients in the city, because the number of our clients are advanced in age, and we'd like to bring a resolution to this issue in their lifetime. Following my appearance here this evening, simultaneous correspondence will be delivered to your city manager and city attorney after the holiday weekend. We look forward and extremely optimistic that we might engage in a meaningful discussion that will bring about a resolution that is beneficial to our client and the great city of Palm Springs. And with that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you again. My name's Brad Anderson, and when I started 1383, I said, oh no, this is going to take forever, because I've sat through a few of these. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just wanted to speak, I wanted to just take a couple minutes of your time to talk about public speaking or public participation in your meetings. As you're, as you're aware, I only have two minutes to really talk about all the agenda items, separate public hearings. And, and that's an issue, because I speak for other people, too, and, and this aspect really limits public participation in the process of the city business, or any business, or any agency. And my fear, because of one of, well, because of one of your representatives that, that's actually Zoomed tonight, they, they kind of, well, it's been impacted on C-VAG, which is Coachella Valley Association governments, where they have limited public participation in the same type of manner. And the Vector District, Coachella Valley Vector District, they did the same thing. And I believe San Diego Board of Supervisors is in the process of doing the same thing. So it's, it's a trend, and it really, I, I just hope, hopefully you can address this later and hopefully allow public participation at a greater stance than it is now. And that's all I have. Thank you very much, and thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could use a point of personal privilege, I don't do this often, but the speaker was referring to me, and I just want to be clear that the city of Palm Springs has had the way that they do public comment for agenda items and non-agenda items at the open and close of the meeting for years and years and years, well before I was here. And C-VAG did move to that format completely independently of me. I had no role in it. If you poll public meetings, I have advocated for more public access to public meetings and less limited, less, fewer limitations, like the two-minute rule. So I'm sorry, this is probably the fifth or 10th time I've heard Mr. Anderson say that and blame me for that. And I just want to be really clear, I had no role in C-VAG moving to that format, and it sounds like it's just a common format with city governments, which the city attorney could definitely have conversations with Mr. Anderson about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, council member. And Madam Clerk, any other public comment?
That concludes our list.
Again, thank you for the reminder. We can now resume, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But I'm just waiting for, yes, thank you. And good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I will be providing an introduction and overview of the changes to the solid waste franchise agreement with Palm Springs Disposal Services tonight. Myself, Tracy, Chris, Bob, and Enrique are present at tonight's meeting, as Flynn mentioned. And since 2021, this group has regularly met to discuss amending the franchise agreement in order for PSDs to provide organic waste collection services to city residents and businesses, and for PSDs to perform other obligations that the city is required to perform under the SB 1383 regulations, and which the city desires to delegate to PSDs in the interest of efficiency and resource management. And at the outset of these meetings, the group that decided that since the agreement was last updated in 2013, almost a decade ago, and there would be significant revisions to the franchise agreement due to SB 1383, the group would instead overhaul and rework the franchise agreement to also update it to include best practices for solid waste agreements. I would also be remiss if I did not recognize Carissa of Sloan-Vasquez McAfee for all her work in developing this agreement as well. And so with that, I'd like to provide an overview of my presentation tonight. First, I'll discuss the SB 1383 requirements and just provide a brief review. Then I'll discuss the current collection services that customers receive and how that will change. Next, I will discuss other changes to the franchise agreement due to the SB 1383 requirements. And because SB, sorry, because SB 1383 requires PSDs to perform additional services, there will be an increase to the rates for solid waste services. And in order to increase those rates, the city will have to go through the procedural requirements required by Proposition 218 for property-related fees. And then lastly, I'll go over the timeline for the adoption of both the franchise agreement as well as the rates for solid waste services. Okay, and so this is a, just a kind of a general overview of SB 1383. Senate Bill 1383 was signed into law in 2016, and it directed CalRecycle to adopt regulations to reduce organic waste in landfills by 50% of its 2014 baseline by 2020, and by 75% by 2025. And of course, organic waste includes food waste, green waste, and other organic materials such as wood waste. SB 1383 also requires the regulations to specify the recovery for human consumption of edible food that would otherwise be disposed of in landfills. So those regulations took effect on January 1st of 2022, and the city was required to adopt enforceable mechanisms, such as an ordinance and franchise agreement, to implement the SB 1383 regulations, or else it would be subject to hefty fines by CalRecycle. And that could be up to $10,000 a day. However, of course, this is, you know, we're well past January 1st. The council did adopt, in a timely manner, the ordinance in December of 2021. However, it was clear that the franchise agreement could not be finalized by January 1st for various reasons. One of them is due to a supply chain issue. The trucks that PSDs ordered for the collection of organic waste was placed in August of 2021, and they still have not yet been delivered. Accordingly, the rollout date for organic waste services for residential customers has regularly been pushed back multiple times. It has gone from January 1st to July 1st to October 1st, and now we're looking at January 1st of 2023. So due to SB 619, which took effect this year, the city was able to avoid incurring the penalties, I mentioned those hefty fines, for this calendar year by adopting a resolution and submitting a notification of intent to comply with the SB 1383 regulations to CalRecycle. So that gives the city a little bit more time to work on that franchise agreement. Okay, and this is the current services. We have residential, commercial, industrial, and temporary bins. PSDs, as you know, is the exclusive hauler for the city. The current franchise has a term of 15 years, and that is set to expire March 30th of 2029, so that's just shy of seven years from now. The SB 1383 regulations requires the city to provide through PSDs organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. So currently, single-family customers do have a black cart for trash and a blue cart for recyclables, and they also have the option to sign up for a green cart for green waste. Right now, approximately 25% of single-family properties do subscribe to green waste containers on a voluntary basis. So for multi-family properties, they are offered trash recyclables and a green waste cart or bin, depending on their needs in terms of volume. With commercial businesses, they also have a brown cart or bin, and that's specifically for food waste. So they have the four containers, they have trash recyclables, green waste, and food waste. And then, of course, there's also the other bins as well that PSDs offers, the roll-off boxes there, and then also they collect compactors. So a new truck route will need to be added specifically to collect organic waste materials. So this did require PSDs to order those trucks, and once those trucks arrive, PSDs will have to hire drivers and train them. So once both the trucks and drivers are available, and the Edum Hill Organic Waste Processing Facility opens later this year, PSDs can begin to provide organic waste collection services to all residential customers, and those residential customers that do have a green waste container right now can begin to also put food waste into those containers as well. And again, the current estimated time for rollout of those organic waste services to residential customers is anticipated to be around October 1st to January 1st. And I would note that the delay of the delivery of the trucks to local jurisdictions is a very prevalent issue right now, and again, affecting many jurisdictions. So this is just an illustration of how the SB 1383 regulations would affect residential customers. They would be required to subscribe to the green organics container. PSDs has placed an order for those carts, and there are no anticipated supply issues with regards to the containers. Under the SB 1383 regulations, the containers do have to be a specific color. It's compliant for trash and recyclables, because it's black or gray for trash, and blue for recyclables, and then it would be green for, or brown for organic waste. Oops, I apologize. In addition, there must be a label that's affixed to each of the containers that specify what types of materials are allowed to be deposited into those containers. So there are some franchise scope of changes due to SB 1383. It would require the new collection of organic waste from single-family properties. It would also newly require the collection of food waste from multi-family properties. It requires source separation and delivery of materials to the appropriate solid waste facilities. So trash goes to the landfill, recyclables go to the material recovery facilities, and organic waste would go to the organic waste processing facilities. Also, PSDs will be reviewing applications for waivers from organic waste services. Under the SB 1383 regulations and under the city's code, there are three possible waivers from organic waste collection services. The first is for commercial businesses that do not generate that much waste. That's a de minimis, de minimis waiver. The second is for commercial businesses that do not have adequate space to have a organic waste container. And the third is for premises where there's no habitation or occupation, or occupancy for six consecutive months. In addition, PSDs will be providing an environmental coordinator and two new recycling ambassadors to perform outreach and education. PSDs will also be performing route reviews. In other words, they'll be going and flipping the lids of the carts to inspect for contamination of those containers. So for example, was a banana peel deposited into the trash cart? It would also be performing, sorry, PSDs would also be performing- It would also be performing, sorry, PSDs would also be performing waste evaluations or sampling waste to assess the city's efforts in reaching diversion goals. And this would apply to both residential and commercial routes. If PSDs does detect contamination in any of the containers, PSDs will be performing education outreach to those waste generators, and that would entail providing a notice informing them about their proper sorting obligations. Also regarding community composting, under the franchise agreement, generators can self-haul their organic waste to community composting facilities, or they can have a third party collect those materials so long as that occurs without charge. Also, under the franchise agreement, PSDs will deliver organic waste to community composting sites in the city at no cost. And some additional changes to the franchise agreement are enhanced outreach and record-keeping requirements due to SB 1383. PSDs will identify new businesses that qualify as commercial edible food generators so that the city can administer the edible food recovery program. There's also a consolidation of various fees and other compensation that PSDs pays to the city for its exclusive franchise, and all those fees would be consolidated into a singular franchise fee at 11% of gross billings. So what happened was, there was an assessment of the amount of total fees that PSDs pays, and it came out to about 11%. And so that's how that figure and percentage was determined. There's also a one-time $200,000 fee that PSDs will be paying to the city for costs related to the execution and implementation of this franchise agreement. Some additional changes that were made were that there were revisions to the rate adjustment methodology and a change in the CPI index that was used. The agreement now lists specific events that trigger default or a breach of the agreement. The agreement also adds liquidated damages for PSDs' failure to perform any of the SB 1383 requirements or any other obligations under the franchise. Not saying that'll happen, but it's just a protection for the city. It also adds additional protections for the city, including various standard indemnification provisions. It also establishes a process for city-directed changes in scope of service and how that should be handled. And it also enhances the provisions under which a performance review will be performed. As I mentioned, the California Constitution requires that property-related fees be subject to certain procedural requirements, namely that the city council hold a public hearing. And so what that means is that the city must mail a notice of the hearing to property owners and tenants directly responsible for the solid waste bill at least 45 days prior to that hearing. And those tenants and owners can submit a written protest to those rates if they want. The rates cannot be imposed if there is a majority of property owners or tenants who submit a written protest to those new rates. But if there isn't a majority protest, then of course, the city council can go ahead and adopt a resolution and approve those rates. And of course, the city council did go through this process last year for extraordinary rates for PSDs, so it'll just be the same process again, but for the new SB 1383 services. Also, under the franchise agreement, PSDs would be required to cover the costs of printing and mailing of the Prop 218 notices, as well as any annual notifications to owners and tenants of any rate adjustments that were previously approved by council. And that draft Prop 218 notices included in this packet tonight as Attachment 5. And the proposed rate increases would need to be attached as an exhibit to the notice that will be mailed out. And so I would just note that staff is seeking direction from council tonight on the rate proposals or the three options that PSDs has submitted in order to finish preparing a draft Prop 218 notice to translate and to send to the printer in June so that it can be timely mailed out to the owners and tenants in July. I'd also note that even if the rates are approved by council, that residential customers would not be charged for services that they do not yet receive. So let's say that council approves those rates in September or October, then that means that if the services are not yet rolled out until January, they would not be charged until they are rolled out in January. Okay, and with that, I have a, just a timeline of everything that will occur, and we are at the council meeting tonight. We have also blocked out two future council meetings in case council would like to discuss the franchise agreement in further detail. We have also noted the deadlines for submitting the Prop 218 notice to the printer, and that would be late June. The Prop 218 notice would need to be mailed by July 15th in order to have a public hearing approving the rates on September 1st. And the franchise agreement and the rates would ideally be approved at the same public hearing, I mean, at the same council meeting with the public hearing. And if approved, then those rates would take effect October 1st. And again, that would apply to commercial customers and only to residential customers if the new services are implemented at that time, too. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that very good presentation. Are there questions? Councilmember, okay, Councilmember Hulstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation, and just want to say, I say this every time, wow, this is very complicated, the public to, for all of us to understand and follow, so appreciate a really clear presentation. So thank you. I just have a question, so if we can look at the options for us to consider. So some of those include an extension of time to the exclusive agreement. Is that right? And can you just explain how that costing works?
Yes, Councilwoman. I'm actually going to turn it over to PSDs because they actually have a presentation about the options for you tonight.
Oh, thank you. And I'm sorry, explain your role again, I don't.
Oh, I'm just providing a legal review of the franchise agreement.
You work with BBK and you're presenting that, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'm going to ask from our city staff perspective about the costs and the fees in the exclusive agreement, so I will hold those questions until the end then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Chris Cunningham with Palm Springs Disposal Services. And then immediately following Chris, we do have Enrique Vasquez, who will join us via Zoom. He's going to go over the methodology with the, with the cost options.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, any members of the public that are listening or watching. Do we want to put the, oh yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much for the time. Thank you, Joanna, for that presentation. I was asked very briefly just to give an overview of rates, current rates, and the options that can be provided, so this will be short. Rate proposals, we're going to look at current rates, and we're also going to look at three rate options. The options that will see the implementation of 1383 and an opportunity for costs to be lowered to residence for term, and they'll be tied to three different franchise items. Okay, current rates for core services right now, obviously not all the service, but this is the core service impacted most by 1383. The residential side, the curbside service right now, economy is $25.89. The family value service is $35.60. The walk-in service is $29.26, and the estate service is $80.66. Oh, no, we have a large menu of service, but again, this is the core part of it. These rates right now, just to keep, keep something in mind here, current rates right now do not include the 1383 services. They do, however, if you recall, last year, October, November, December, went through the, the extraordinary rate adjustment exercise, and that started in January, and that sunsets next month, the end of the month, and then shortly behind that is the cost for 1383. So keeping that in mind as we go through these few slides. Option one, this is the current agreement. It ends March 30th, 2029, so six years and nine months left. So the monthly rates for the core services for the remaining term with the 1383 services included, curbside services would be $26.61, the walk-in service would be $34.37, and estate service would be $87.27. And that's for the current term. And option two, the agreement ending June 30th, 2032. This adds three years and three months to the, to the current term. This allows us to amortize the vehicles, the equipment, and the investment over a longer period of time. And these monthly rates would be the curbside service, $25.28, walk-in service, $32.65, and estate service at $82.91. Now, the individual yearly discounts or the savings that a ratepayer would see would be 5% in the first year, 1% in the second, and 1% in the third. Again, this all includes the 1383 services. Option three, this would be ending the agreement on June 30th, 2037. This adds eight years and three months to the current term. And again, this just gives us even more time to amortize the investment over time. So the monthly rates for the core services would be curbside service at $24.22, the walk-in service at $31.28, the estate service is $79.42. An individual yearly discount, you'd see, the customer would see savings of the first year, 9%, 7% the second year, 5% the third, and 4% the fourth. Again, these are all 1383 services are included. And then this last slide, it just is a comparison of what it is right now today, and from the left to the right, the service, the current, and then options one, two, and three. Just wanted to give a snapshot of that. And that concludes my presentation.
Next, I'd like to introduce Enrique Vasquez. He is with Vasquez, Sloan Vasquez McAfee, and is one of the city's hired consultants, and he provided an overview of the, of the, of the rate methodology and has been working with the team the entire time. So I will turn it over to Mr. Vasquez.
Good evening, and as stated, my name's Mr. Vasquez, and I would like to cover a couple of things from the top here and then be willing to answer questions. The analysis that we performed from a financial perspective was that when you look at these rates as presented, it's a very small selection, although it's, you know, a very common rate for the residential, but when you look at the contract as a whole, it's a large selection of rates, and different quantities are selected by, you know, the various customers. So the best way to get a feel for the value of the agreement is rather than look at individual rates, is to look at the total revenue that's generated by the agreement. And we've been working over the last three or four years, even before we started this, this process with the previous rate reviews and doing the extraordinary rate adjustments. So we've developed a good working relationship with Palm Springs Disposal and an understanding of their structure. And so what we did is we took the subscription levels for all the different categories and used that against the rates to project out the revenues that they were generating, and we did the same thing with their proposed rates so that we can compare what are the rates that, how much revenue would be generated under the proposed rate as compared to where they are right now. That way, we can get a good feel for what the increase in revenue is going to be across the board. The second thing that we did is that Palm Springs Disposal submitted a budget that identified what they needed to, to recover their cost of providing the, the scope of work for SB 1383. And we analyzed that and projected those costs out and compared, okay, if they were going to be compensated for this budget, do these rates provide for that? And so at the end of the day, what I concluded was that their proposed rates, as they are for option one, is, were very close, and I want to say that the rates are not out of line overall. We're seeing across the state, cities having to adopt 20% to 30% rate increases to get to where they need to with SB 1383, so these rates are not really outside of that range. But based on my analysis, I concluded that they could potentially lower the rates about 1% or 2% and still be fine. So that's for option one. Now, I want to point out that also, as Chris stated, in those rates that he showed as current, as he said, you know, there's the, the, there's the component for the extraordinary rate adjustment that's going to expire, so the current rates without the extraordinary rate adjustments are actually 1982. So then they would be going from 1982 to 2661. That would be the actual increase that, that the rate you're going to go up to. And I'm not, I want you just to be aware that that's the increase, but it is an increase that is required. It's not an, you know, out-of-line increase on its own. And the other thing I want to point out is that on option two and option three, while they gave us rates for year one, they also proposed to increase those rates incrementally for a year or two or three, depending on the option, to bring them back up to the level that they need to be. It's not a rate that is set as year one and then subject to an annual rate increase alone, but they structurally go up a given amount, a fixed amount, then they get a rate adjustment on top of that, so that by year three and year four, depending on the option, they just, in essence, raise the rates back up to what they would have wanted them to be. So there's, there's that component of the options two and three. And again, options two and three are trade-offs for term, and I, as I mentioned in my report, term is valuable to a franchisee. The city didn't really ask for options with additional term. They, they provided those, and, which is not uncommon, that contractors would want to do that to extend their term, and they offered discounts for that. But I can't tell you with certainty that, that those reductions are worth the extra term, because the city, the only real way to know what that is worth is to actually get additional haulers to bid on that and to offer rates. So while those options can be meaningful and the city may choose to, to select them, they're not, you know, as clear as to the value as to the option one, which is for the remaining term and incorporates the, the budget of SB 1383. So that's my overall review of their proposal from a financial point of view, and I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Are there questions for? Councilmember Woods.
Thank you, thank you very much, everybody. I'd like to know, how long has this contract that we currently have, how long has Palm Springs Disposal Service been the disposal service for? Springs Disposal Service been the disposal service for the city of Palm Springs?
Thank you, Councilmember Woods.
I don't know the answer to that.
I do. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and answer that. So we were granted the franchise agreement in 1972.
1972.
1972.
We've never, you've been solid since 1972. We've never gone out to a competitive bid since 1972?
No, that's right, since 1972. I am the third-generation trash man here, yes.
Wow.
Growing up here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Is that correct, that we've not had any competitive bids since 1972? That's very different than the question as to how long has the contract been in place?
Yes, I believe there hasn't been a competitive bid process here.
May I ask a follow-up of city staff, Councilmember Woods? And Mayor, thank you. So in the staff report, it says that PSDS has been the city's exclusive waste hauler since 1972. And then it says in 2013, the city entered into an agreement with PS Disposal for 15 years. So does city staff know? I know we don't have anyone sitting up there who was here 15 years ago, I think. But do we have information about what that process was and when it was extended and what level of review was given?
I don't have those details, and I don't know if we do on team, but I suppose the only thing that could have happened is a sole-source negotiation, similar to what we did with the extraordinary rate increase, where hopefully we use a consultant to evaluate the reasonableness of the proposed fees. But that's the only other way it could have been created, I think, is through negotiation.
Is that right for the representative? Thank you.
Yes, in 2014, we went through a review process. The city had a consultant, and we went through two years of consulting, went through a performance review and a rate review, went through that process, and then was awarded an extension or a new term, yes.
Thank you so much, and thank you for providing waste and disposal services to the city since 1972. Third generation is really impressive. So it's not a criticism of you in any way. It's just we're trying to figure out our bid process here and what that process looks like.
Yeah, you know, if you don't mind me just saying, so real quickly, just from a personal standpoint, yeah, you know, we fully understand that at some point, you know, you've got to go through the procurement process and the bidding process. So we work extremely hard and do everything we can to ensure that the city doesn't have to make that difficult decision.
If I could ask just a clarifying question? The issue before us this evening is it whether or not to approve option one, two, or three, or to provide feedback based on what we're hearing for further discussions that would take place between the city and Palm Springs Disposal and our outside consultant then coming back to us with a recommendation at a subsequent date.
Hello? The request of council is to provide feedback on the rate proposals. I guess there would be the three rate options that, or proposals that were provided. And then if there was anything different too from council, that's also possible as well. And then if there's anything in terms of direction regarding the language or provisions in the franchise agreement too, we'd welcome that as well.
So I take that, that we are not making any final decisions this evening. We're providing feedback and direction.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Woods?
Mr. Vasquez, I want to thank you very much for pointing out what I thought wasn't really a practical review of options two and three. So I want to thank you for that because the question I actually have with that is, they are, what I heard from the Palm Springs Disposal Service, is they want to amortize any new equipment that they need within the term of the contract, but yet they will own that equipment beyond a contract. So why would they need to amortize it within a contract and then want to extend it for cheaper value?
It's, most of that equipment will not really have much value after about seven years. So many contracts will, you know, five-year contracts are considered very short because they have to be priced higher. Seven years are considered kind of in the range of equipment life. 10 to 15 years are then greater than that. So many times, the life of the contract will be, the equipment can be seven to 10 years for especially vehicles. They require more maintenance towards the end, so they are more costly. They may not have to pay them, but they have to maintain them. But even so, if they do continue to own them, they can recover the cost of the equipment over a longer period of time, that is, they allow themselves to get paid over a longer period of time. So they can reflect that in the rates, as lower rates. That's very common.
And how much time is left in the current contract?
Six years, nine months.
Six years and nine months? Okay, good. I see that here. Okay. So they basically can amortize it with option number one in six years and nine months, according to what you said?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's what their option number one reflects.
So there's really no need to have option two or three if they're amortizing the whole thing within the, basically, seven years?
Yes, unless, you know, you see value in the reduced pricing to allow them to recover those, you know, to, they can choose to amortize them for a longer period of time for pricing purposes.
Okay.
And therefore, look.
But, and we don't really know if they're competitive or not because it sounds like since 1972, we haven't gone out to bid. So we really, our residents don't really know, and the city doesn't really know, what's happening out there in the open market?
That's correct. And I've been reviewing the current contract for the last three or four years, did a performance review, one of the, whoops, the one that was referred to earlier, but subsequent to that, worked through the extraordinary rate adjustment. And the current prices are, you know, well within a reasonable number. What is complicated here is the addition of SB 1383, unknown cost, you know, forecasting the future. So if you, you know, extend a contract beyond this, and there may be opportunities to relook at that sooner rather than later and see if the market has adjusted.
Okay, and then just the rates that are on the sheet, and maybe, this is for Tracy, the rates that are on the sheet in page 3E-4, is, that's monthly, quarterly? You know? And maybe the Palm Springs Disposal Service can answer that.
These are monthly rates and customers are billed on a quarterly basis.
Okay, so their monthly rates billed on a quarterly basis. So with option one, we're going from 1838 after daylight, right after the current little extraordinary. So we're actually increasing it by, for residential service, $8 a month?
Well, for example, we're currently at 2589, and option one would increase it to 2661.
But that 2589 stops just around the corner.
Correct.
So it's 1838. So we're really talking about going from 1838 to 2651.
Correct.
For that particular one. And it looks like we've added in a new option called vacation property?
Correct.
And can you talk to me about what that, how that came about? And does vacation property currently get charged 2398? Is that?
I would actually defer to Palm Springs Disposal to speak on that issue.
Because it wasn't in the charts we looked at.
Sure.
Yeah, Councilmember Woods, thank you for bringing that up, yeah. These rates were originally established 2014, right, for the current agreement. Now, the issue with that is that we didn't really know anything about vacation homes. This is a couple of years before the ordinance was even in place, before the popularity of vacation homes. And even, we had no way of tracking them until the city had an actual Vacation Code Compliance Department, which now we work on a weekly basis. I can tell you that right now, we did all the research on it. So yeah, half of them subscribe to a higher level of service because, yes, there is much more trash coming out of them, out of the vacation homes.
No, no, keep going, I'm sorry.
So that, we're addressing that need, is the need for vacation homes to have a larger level of service because that's where most of our, a lot of our issues come from that category.
Okay, I find that interesting, that I had brought that issue up when we did the extraordinary rate increase, and you had no data at that point. And that was just a couple of months ago.
And that's exactly why, that's, to be honest, that's exactly why we researched it.
And how do you research it in two months?
Because we can still pull all the information from our software system. I just didn't have that particular information. So vacation homes, we have marked in our software system. So we can pull out all the information, how many carts they have, what days of the week they go, everything. But when you asked the question, I apologize, I couldn't efficiently answer that at the time, but that's why I went back and looked at everything. It's just a process we go through in our software system, but I can pull everything out of there.
So I just want to try and understand the science behind it, right? So you come by and you pick up three bins, or two bins, if they got a green, three bins at a vacation rental. You know, you have no waiting, you don't weigh it, you don't look at it, you just dump it in the truck. How do you know it's generating more?
Well, because those are, they're all walk-ins. They're, it's, they're mandated to have a walk-in service. So our guys have to walk in the back, go in there, see what they have, then they got to pull them out. Now, some of the issues we have is this, we pull them out, our crew carries GPS tablets for every time they go to a service.
Okay.
Now, after they do that, we'll get a call, let's say maybe a day or two later. This is between visitors, maybe, and housekeeping goes there, or they go clean the place up. Now, all of a sudden, we get a call saying, hey, you didn't pick it up. So those are some of the issues that we get, and we know that we have so much more material coming out of those.
Yeah, I wouldn't doubt that. I just was curious how you did the science for it, so. Because it's basically doubling the rate by option one, or any of the options, it's basically doubling the rate for vacation rentals. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Other questions for, we've got a variety of folks here too, but are there other questions?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to add as well. Staff routinely, over the years, has been keeping tabs on rates here in Coachella Valley, so checking with other cities. We do have that historical data, and I'm happy to provide that at a future date. And then where we are currently with 1383 in terms of Coachella Valley, there are some jurisdictions who have their updated franchise agreements in place. The majority, however, are still in negotiations as we are, so those rates are not finalized. But the 20% to 30% increase is what they are stating across the board statewide, and that figure is coming from CalRecycle, if that's helpful at all.
Thank you, that is helpful. And we are in the midst of a very long-term contract, and there's many reasons why those are long-term contracts. If there are no other questions, and I'm not sure that's the case, Councilmember Woods?
I just want to be clear and the public to know. So are we adding trucks? Are we having to buy specialized trucks basically for green waste and organic waste?
Additional trucks are needing to be purchased because 14,000 additional carts are having to be purchased for food waste. And for our residential, they are going to be a combination of both your landscape clippings, but also your bagged food waste. So the purchase, again, of 14,000 additional carts, and then those trucks, those additional trucks are needed because those additional routes are being added specifically for the organic waste collection.
So 14,000, is that, we have more homes than that, don't we? Or, yeah, so is that because it's condominiums, I assume, that we have a lot of condominiums?
Well, for your multifamily, some have carts, some have bins, which are the metal dumpsters, but those are, and I just want to confirm that I'm quoting the correct figures of the number of carts that Palm Springs Disposal purchased. 14,000.
14,000, okay.
And the reason I know that is because we're going to be helping by staging those over at our maintenance yard.
And how many trucks is this equal? I mean, maybe Palm Springs Disposal can answer that.
Yes.
I mean, you're looking at buying...
Okay, so right now, there's 5,000 customers that are basically, roughly 5,000 customers that have the green waste cart already that will turn into the organics cart. But I'm sorry, would you, which other questions you have? Oh, how many trucks? I'm sorry.
I'm trying to understand the scope of what we have to buy to make this, to implement it, right?
So we need three trucks to handle this. So you have two trucks that are the automated system. Those are the ones that have the side-loading that you see going. And then you have one truck that's a rear-loading truck, and that takes care of the smaller areas in the cities that those trucks can't get into and can't use that arm.
Okay, great. So we're buying, or you're buying, I guess, three trucks and trash cans? And then I assume you have to pay for the disposal of it, which is a cost as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Question for Mr. Vasquez. You indicated that your review of option one was that they could lower the fee that they're proposing by somewhere between 1% and 2%. Could you expound upon that? And did I hear you correctly?
Yes, you did hear me correctly. And my, the basis for that conclusion is that they submitted, PSDS submitted a budget, and it was very reasonable, incorporated the cost of new trucks, the processing organics, and the addition of staff, not just drivers, but actually the ambassadors that are required. SB 1383 has heavy requirements for route monitoring and whatnot. When I compared, added that to their revenue requirement, and then projected out their rates based on their proposed rates and their subscription levels, the revenues were very close, but there was a couple of features in their budget that I challenged, and that is that they added a GNA component of, well, together with profit of about, I'm trying to remember right now, if it was 20, 30%, 25%, I can't remember it right now, but they added a component for GNA. And usually, when your pricing is something that I've done for many years for these kinds of services, you could add a component for GNA as a percent of total because you've got to account for, you know, fractional people here and there and accounting and whatnot. But the contract already includes a compensation for GNA. And for the new services, they are actually including all the staff that they need, and the equipment, and the tablets, and the personnel. So my question to PSDS is what additional GNA do you need to cover with that percent? And I don't feel like I got a good enough answer because they've already accounted for all that. So I backed up the GNA for the new services only, not for their existing services, and left a 10% profit margin, which in many franchise agreements is considered reasonable. And so that's, that generated about a 2.1% less. Not just that alone, but together with the entire scope of rates, projecting out how much revenue it would generate as a whole, generated about a 2.1% less revenue. So if you just took the rates as proposed in option one and dropped them 2%, they would generate the revenue... generate the revenue that, in my opinion, that they would need.
So I guess this follow-up question would be for our staff. Is there any reason why we on council shouldn't ask you to go back and work from Mr. Vasquez's numbers in your negotiations to come?
I would offer that this is during the term of an exclusive franchise, a negotiation, as it has been apparently with renewals of franchise agreements. Typically, one of the ways communities get a market reality check on these is through the competitive process. We're fortunate to have somebody like Mr. Vasquez working with us to help us understand reasonableness, but I think he would be the first to admit that that's inexact science. Reasonable is, you know, an approximation as close as you can get, and that's what we've been left with outside of the competitive process, is to assess that. So if council would like to suggest anything regarding the rates, we would certainly take that into consideration, or the representatives from Palm Springs Disposal could, if you were proposing the possibility of a lower cost associated with the 1383 services.
So I would think one of the things that all of us are going to feel a bit more reassured by is to be able to start to see some of our adjoining cities and the contracts that they have, and what those look like, and there's, and I know they are in the same process that we're in right now, but having some of those numbers when we come back to approve a final contract will be reassuring to know that we're in the appropriate range of paying like prices for like services. Since I have the floor, Palm Springs Disposal Services, I think, has been an incredibly good partner for the city of Palm Springs and for our residents for a very long period of time, and there's value in long-term relationships, and I'm thankful and appreciative of the work that they've done. To jump ahead for a city council that would be in place in 2029 and 2032 and beyond, and start making decisions today as to what would be appropriate that many years out, I really struggle with binding the hands of future city councils this far in advance, and so, notwithstanding something compelling personally, I'm not inclined to extend the terms of this agreement, most particularly given the comments that Mr. Vasquez made regarding the lifespan of these trucks and this equipment seems to be relatively consistent with the termination of this existing agreement. Am I missing something? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with your comments. I think that's right. It's, we appreciate the services and we value the services, but it's, yeah, I don't want to make a decision for that far ahead. I also see, of course, that this is going to be coming back to us many more times. It really is hard with such a dense document and difficult conversation to be having it this late at night, and I would just ask staff if it's, and I guess maybe the mayor as well, if we can push this up when it comes back, so that we can have a little bit more of a fresh discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Woods?
Tracy, what is our timing on this to comply with state law? I mean, obviously, we can't discuss it ad nauseam, we have to make a decision at some point, right?
Absolutely. So with the city being proactive and applying for SB 619, we do have coverage through this calendar year of 2022. So, you know, we are in an optimal situation until '23, and as was commented on earlier in the evening, these supply chain issues are not special to Palm Springs or Coachella Valley. They're feeling them throughout the state, so CalRecycle is having some flexibility.
I would just note that the administrative penalties that, and the protection for the city against any of the administrative penalties is guaranteed until, I believe it was October 1st, when, which was the date that the city put in its notification of intent to comply. And that date was placed because PSDS had reached out to the manufacturer of the trucks to kind of get a gauge as to when those would be delivered, and I think they had anticipated that would arrive earlier, and it has just kind of shifted. So if that October 1st deadline isn't met, I would imagine that CalRecycle would reach out and discuss whether there has to be a corrective action plan that is issued. That said, I do agree with Tracy that there are supply chain issues that are, you know, statewide issues, and that it would be very hard for a regulatory agency to kind of hold the city to something when it had no control over the delivery of the trucks, and clearly PSDS did not have control over the trucks. That said, I do think that, of course, we're looking at rates, and we also have to kind of work on the franchise agreement at the same time, and so, of course, those kind of discussions kind of go in tandem.
So I guess my concern is if we delay making it, there are supply chain problems. I don't know if Palm Springs Disposal is going to front-order it already without having something in place. If we don't get something in place for a couple of more months, it seems like we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Am I wrong in that? Is that...
Well, the trucks have already been ordered.
Okay.
The order was placed August of 2021.
Okay.
And so it is really a delivery issue, and it's not, you know, Palm Springs Disposal Services' fault. That said, I think that if you're considering, well, what is the rates that would be imposed for the remainder of the term, just for the implementation of the SB 1383 services, then I think that that's something that we could take and look and bring back to council, if that's what council desires.
So I'll just kind of close with my remarks. I agree with the mayor 100%, and at the mayor pro tem. I think we want to get this program up and running, we want to get people used to it. There's going to be a cost, but it doesn't seem like the cost is going to be, if we go with option one, which I would support, it doesn't seem like the cost is much more than it is today on the temporary thing. I would ask with Palm Springs Disposal Service, I think there's a difference between a vacation rental property and a home share, that you look at what the difference is, and maybe it needs to be split, maybe not, but, you know, to really look at that difference between the two, because I think they're very two different beasts on that, but that would be my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Holstich, do you want to weigh in with anything different or new?
Thank you, I agree with everything that's been said, and I also support option one with further review by staff.
Staff, do you have the direction that you need from us this evening?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. This has been a tremendous amount of work, and I know there's an awful lot left to come. And we've made it, it is complicated. Ultimately, there's something really simple that's going to happen here, and that is we're going to have to educate the public to treat their waste, specifically food waste, very differently than most of us have been used to for many, many years. And I don't think anybody should underestimate the work that's going to have to go into that re-education process. Well, with that, we will move on to the last item, which is city council and city manager comments, reports, and agenda development.
Mayor, I'm happy to kick off, if that's okay.
All right.
And if PS TV could put up the tentative upcoming meeting schedule. A couple of things to point out. One is we do have a study session, a third budget study session scheduled for June 8th. Do want to confirm that we had discussed conceptually, including maybe for the first hour, a joint meeting with Measure J, so that they could deliver any recommendations they have regarding use of Measure J funds for capital projects. The balance of that time would be used to complete review of the budget with focus on general fund and capital fund, available funding, and complete and as comprehensive as possible lists of possible uses for those funds, including the kinds of things that council members discussed at previous budget sessions. I'll just go through and then take feedback on the whole thing. June 16th is delayed compared to normal schedule, so that's actually three weeks away, so things may change between now and then, but we have a handful of items tentatively scheduled for that date, and a little room on the agenda where if we don't get some items that come up that are timely, we will likely have something that we can add to this agenda that we have kind of in the queue and ready to go. And then lastly, also discussed at a previous joint, or I'm sorry, budget meetings, budget study session, is June 21st, we have an opportunity to meet with commissions. So we'd like to get any final input on that. We do have a hold on the convention center to do a dinner, likely a program where we would thank individual commission members for their service, and then potentially to have some way that each commission might present for, say, 10 minutes on what they've done over the course of the last year and what they see ahead for the next year. So I would at least like to get confirmation in any direction for the June 8th and June 21st additional sessions, and of course, any direction on other agenda items that need to be on the 16th or other dates.
Comments from council?
What's the discovery music, I was standing in Palm Springs, an update on the, can you talk to me? I mean, I'm not sure what that is. I know what the discovery, I've been there, but I mean, why are we getting an update? It's not in our city.
So my understanding, and I don't know exactly what this presentation, but I know that they're in the process of envisioning a significant expansion and making presentations to all Coachella Valley cities about those plans.
Is that something they could do in a letter format, or, I'm just curious why we need a presentation on it? I just...
I'd be happy to take direction from council if you would prefer this information be conveyed some other way.
I'm not personally in a position to judge one way or another as to what we, whether it's best in person. It sounds like something that would be attractive to hear in person. I am a little concerned about doing it on June 16th, when we have a budget to get approved, and we just don't know how difficult that conversation is going to be on June 16th, and that is something we need to complete on the 16th.
I think that's a good point about the timing of it, but I do think, I know we're limiting presentations generally, but a presentation is, you know, every now and then is fine with me, and I think, in light of how often we end up bringing up the lack of children and youth services in Palm Springs, it would be nice to hear what their expansion is.
I agree, I'd like to hear the presentation. I agree with the mayor that it isn't timely on our end, though it might be on theirs, but we have a packed agenda with the budget that night, but there are frankly so few things to do for families with young kids that it is highly relevant, especially indoor activities, as it's going to be very, very hot. So I do, it's relevant to me and a lot of Palm Springs residents.
What's missing is the council agreed to hear a presentation from the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy, and it hasn't been scheduled yet, so we just need to schedule that.
Is there something staff should do to assist with that scheduling?
Yeah, yeah, like, yeah, just wanted to schedule it, you know, we just need to schedule it, and then they've agreed to do it after we agreed, and we just need to put it on a schedule and let them know.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think we've agreed that we want to try to reduce presentations, but we're not eliminating them all together, and they do, they do have value, we just need to be careful with our time.
It's probably not the right moment, but I do have a request for a presentation, or it could be an agenda item, it's up to council, but the County of Riverside has received our point-in-time homeless count numbers, and the numbers are actually very good and surprising that homelessness has decreased, and so I asked our city manager if it's possible that council could consider a presentation on the point-in-time count results. We could do it in conjunction with an agenda item, too, if you wanted to get a full update on homelessness services, but I think that that would be very, very relevant for our policy work on homelessness and housing.
I agree completely.
I agree as well.
Are there anything else from the city manager? All right, council member comments, reports? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a few points, I'm sorry, I know it's late. The first is just congratulations to Palm Springs High School class of 2022, it was their graduation today. A little disappointing to miss it, my little cousin graduated today, so that was nice. But I did want to talk a little bit just about recent events. You know, on Tuesday, we had a meeting in Desert Highlands Gateways States about crime in the community, and it was the same day, unfortunately, as the Uvalde shooting. And then I went to this meeting where we were discussing violent crime and shootings that are happening right here in Palm Springs. And, you know, we know that the number one cause of death among children and teens is actually gun violence, and it's not just mass shootings, it's this gun violence that happens at home, it's guns left out, or it's guns getting in the wrong hands, and it's been disturbing, the increase that we've seen in gun violence among our teens in the city of Palm Springs. We've had six teenagers murdered in our city since 2019, and I know there have been multiple others who have been injured, and this is all due to gun violence. And we heard the community list a lot of the same types of things that they usually do about what they're looking for, which is programming for youth, more involvement from the police and activities to help to bridge that gap in comfort levels with the police department. And there was at one point a comment made about whose responsibility is it to do these types of programs? And I had been sitting through this meeting this whole time, and it really just frustrated me, and I stood up and I discussed, and I said, it's all of our responsibility, right? Because it is. It's the responsibility of all of us as a community, as a city, the school district, the police department, all of us, to do what we can to support our children, to support our teens, and to make things better. And within that discussion that evening, there was also a request for $7 million of investment in the north end of our city, and this was raised because of the gun violence, and the police had presented statistics that 2% of the population is up in this north end of town, but there's 30% of the violent crime. And so someone did some math and said, let's invest $7 million in Desert Highlands Gateways States, and not just Desert Highlands Gateways States, but the entirety of the north end of town. So I said, great, I love that, but you're going to need to get four other council members on board as well. And this became a very sensational headline in the paper. So I wanted to make it clear to my colleagues that my intention was to say, as a council, we, as the five of us, have not invested what I thought is enough in the north end of town, and this has been something that we haven't, the city has not invested very much in the north end of town. much in the north end of town over decades. And it's not because we don't want to, it's because it's been complicated, and we've been working towards things. And that's what I wanted to say is, you know, we have been talking about housing. Well, District One has the most empty residential lots out of any other district. So I've been talking with Habitat for Humanity for a while now about how do we get self-help homes into those lots, because the city owns, I think it's six or seven residential lots within District One on both the north and the south portions. So those were sent to Habitat for Humanity so that they can evaluate and determine if this is something that they can do. And I know that our city staff with code enforcement have also been working to identify properties in Palm Springs that are abandoned, that are beyond repair, that we could then take over and begin land banking. So these are, this housing portion is something that's going to come before council in the future, and I think it's directly connected to how we can start reducing crime and increasing investment in areas of our city that don't have it. Additionally, we have a fairly robust parks and rec program for our younger children, but we lack a lot for our teens. Once they hit 13, they don't have as much, and we've discussed this before as a council. And so I do plan on asking that we specifically earmark some funding and support in our parks and rec program to support our preteens and teens. And this includes, you know, job training, workforce development. That's why I brought, I had Johnny work on this internship and, you know, discussion of city jobs program. And then the last part is just funding that we can set aside for grants, because there are things that we can't do as a city. For instance, I worked with a church in Palm Desert to clear the land behind the community center in Golden Sands Mobile Home Park. We cleaned up the inside of the community room, and now it's empty. We removed two cars. I mean, it was disgusting, but there's, still, it's unusable. But the city can't really step in and do something, but we could provide grant funding to a nonprofit that could landscape it and that could put a playground, that we could work towards some of these things. So I think there's a lot of opportunity here, and I think that what I'm starting to realize is that there's been, we haven't had an opportunity to really sit down and discuss all of the different ways that we can do this together as a council, and I know that all of you care deeply about this issue. And that's the point that I wanted to make, is that I believe in us as a council, and I believe in how we can move forward on this, and I do want to be able to have that support from us in moving forward in the future.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All of us have had difficult days, and we've got some very difficult decisions to make over the next few weeks regarding our budget, but whatever we pass in June of this year is just a first step in the progress that we will hope to make. We have made a commitment to improve the quality of life throughout our city, and that's going to take cooperation from all of us, and we really appreciate you stepping forward. Are there any other comments from council? Councilmember Woods?
Certainly, I can go. I am the city's representative to the Southern California Association of Governments, and I had the excellent opportunity to attend the general meeting that they held in Indian Wells. You're like, why are we involved in the Southern California Association of Governments? Where they're the ones that give us the RIN numbers, that tells us how much housing we need to build in our city, but they do a lot more. They're doing, they work on climate change, they work on traffic, they work on a variety of things. So it was great to come together for our annual meeting and talk about where we've been, where we're going, and where we hope to go, and it's more prominent now, kind of with oil prices so high, trying to drive less, trying to use less fossil fuels. So it's a good time to be involved with SCAG. I am not the region's representative, I'm just the city's representative. I also wanted to just kind of say that the Coachella Valley Mountain Conservancy, which I'm also on, we've just allocated money to Riverside County to develop a, to do the planning, to develop a couple of regional parks. I think that's important for our valley as a whole. We're looking at park, at areas of the valley that maybe don't, are underrepresented with parks, but they would be available to everybody, and that is just a planning study at this point, and we're looking at locations of what that might be, and that will be an outcome of the planning study. But something really exciting that I had an opportunity to do is, I have always believed, and fell in love with Palm Springs 40 years ago, all right, I'm only 41, no, but, was our small hotels. Our small hotels define us. It was my experience when I came here, staying in a small gay hotel of all things, as well as the natural beauty that around, that really formulated the great impression that I have of Palm Springs. And we have, the city has embarked, before I was a council member, on giving money to those hotels that revamp. There's a lot of change in the small hotels, because they're a lot of times owned by a sole proprietor, but, you know, we have the Walk of Inns and whatnot. We have incredible hotels that are small in the city that the other cities don't necessarily have. They have big convention hotels, which we've got a couple of, but it's our small hotels that I think really define us. And it's called the Palm Springs Preferred Small Hotels, and they have an organization that was established in 19, excuse me, in 2016, and it started off with town hall meetings with the local hotel owners and managers in partnership with the city of Palm Springs. And they were committed to, the small hotels are anything that's 50 rooms or less. So it's just a few of our hotels that are more than 50 rooms, but they, those hotels get a lot of attention. And the small hotels has two kind of separate subgroups to them. One's called the Small Hotels Palm Springs Shops, and another one's called the Desert Gay Tourism Guild. So we have kind of three organizations that work to promote these small hotels and whatnot in the city. Their meetings are open to the public, and they're funded through a 1% assessment levered onto a person who stays in the hotel. So what they did, and it's called the T-Bid, Business Improvement District, they brought in lesbian, gay, bisexual, queer travel writers from around the country to visit Palm Springs. And I got to meet with them on a couple of occasions to talk to them about Palm Springs, what we have to offer, why people should come here, you know, all of, what our industry is, and we had an excellent opportunity to get stories in publication, or hopefully we're going to get stories in publications like Gay Cities Edge, The Irish Times, of all things, Irish Times. And then one contributor is with NBC News, CBS Watch, Travel Zoo, Passport, Four Doors, so I hope we get some leverage out of this and what happens, because these hotels, these small hotels bring in $14 million in revenue to our city, it's estimated, which is a substantial amount. But I think the highlight, besides talking them of the city, I had city staff help me prepare brochures on our cannabis industry, and they prepared great brochures, and some of the hotel owners wanted them for their customers, so we'll have to give some more of them out. But today, we did, we did a tour of cannabis growing, we did a tour of cannabis manufacturing, we did a tour of the retail shops and what they mean, and just the whole process of tracking cannabis from the time it is grown until the time it is ingested, and it's an amazing process. The extraction process of getting oil out of the trimmings is fascinating. It is an industry that is fascinating, and when you go into it, coming from the Midwest, I couldn't help but think of two things. One was the dairy farms that I grew up with, and the corn. Coachella Valley has a very, very long history of agriculture, and it's still entrenched here. We are the largest date-producing region of the world, way outside of anywhere in Arabia or whatnot. We're huge with our date productions. We're also huge with our vegetables and things of that, you know, kind of the soft fruit type of stuff. What's interesting about that industry, like the cannabis industry, is that it's not subsidized by the federal government. Where soy and corn and all that is fully subsidized. So our farmers out here in our valley, we're kind of totally different model than the model I grew up with in the Midwest. And, you know, the cannabis is so highly regulated, I had no idea, you have a tag on it from the point it's grown until it is sold out of the store. And it was a fascinating tour. I would suggest any council member, anyone in the community might want to take it, especially if they have concerns about the cannabis industry, but the inside is also like a motive, these machines are amazing, and it's like the automotive. So you have the farmers, and they're actually farmers, and they're millennials, and our COD is learning to teach people how to be in cannabis now, which we never had. You had to learn just by going and doing it with somebody, usually in the illegal market, which is totally legal now. So I just wanted to share that as a really great thing that's happening for our city, promoting kind of cannabis as an option if somebody comes here, and then I let them know what the rules and regulations were over it. So it was, it was great to do. So thank you very much for that time.
Thank you, Councilmember Woods. Any other, Councilmember Holstage?
Hi, I have a council member request. I'm sorry, I forgot about it earlier. My council fellow, Lauren Wolfher, has been working with, if you remember, the childcare facility on Palm Canyon called in and provided public comment, I think it was last meeting or the meeting before, saying they were losing out on their current facility because of a speculative cannabis shop, and that they needed assistance finding a new location or staying at that site. And so my council fellow, Lauren, has worked really closely with city staff and investigating different policies for different cities, and if you recall, we had considered that zone, zoning update, where I asked city staff to possibly consider any of the barriers to childcare providers in our city, knowing that it really is a childcare desert, and there are very limited options and locations. And so what we've learned through going through this process with the childcare provider is that they'd have to apply for a land use permit or a conditional use permit, which are often in the thousands of dollars. And so I'd like to request that council add to our list a policy to provide incentives and fee waivers for childcare providers and childcare businesses, so that we can spur and support more childcare providers in the city, which is a huge economic development issue, and worth it for the city to invest, you know, $1,600 in a fee waiver for these types of businesses. So I'd love to see that come back. I think that childcare provider might request a waiver from the city council, and maybe we can consider it then, but currently, there's no policy on the books to allow us to do a waiver like that. Thank you, and thank you to Lauren for her work on this.
Thank you.
Oh, so I need council support now to add things to the agenda, right? So I'd like to, so I'd make a motion to add a policy to subsidize or provide incentives or fee waivers to childcare businesses to our upcoming agenda items.
And we don't need to form a motion, right? We just need to add, just give support?
I would ask for two others to join me in requesting that.
Yeah, just making it clear. Yes, I also agree, and I know that we have a huge waiting list at our daycares here, so I agree.
I'm open to having that considered, certainly. I'm also open to making it more difficult for cannabis facilities to replace childcare facilities. And joking aside, one of my concerns early on that I did express here on this dais was that the intensity of the number of cannabis facilities coming in is going to be counterproductive to long-term commercial renting, because more facilities are coming in than can be sustained economically over time. But I'll get off that step box.
Thank you. Well, I'd support that policy as well, and I think the city council had attempted to do that in amending our separation requirement factors that we consider, right? We had said, you know, prioritizing vacant spaces and not prioritizing locations where they pushed out an existing business, and I think that it would be beneficial to consider making that stronger, especially if just pure speculation is pushing out needed businesses for residents.
Is there anything else for him? All right, then we've reached that point of adjournment. The next regular city council meeting will be held on June 16, 2022, but we will have a special and very important study session on June 8th. And reminder for everyone, that begins at 1:00 PM in the afternoon, and that will be devoted to the budget. We will be joined in that meeting by the Measure J Commission at 10:29. We are adjourned. Please stay safe out there.